Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May 11th, 2017, Public Delegation Night for the Hallton District School Board about the Burlington Program in Accommodation Review. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Before we start, I need to have a motion to waive the rules because our delegation by law outlines that we were only allowed to have 25 delegates and we decided to have more tonight. So I need a mover to waive the rules, Trustee Collard, seconded by Trustee Reynolds. All those in favor of waiving the rules? That passes unanimously. We need to now vote that we would allow to have the 31 delegations that we were going to have. Can I have a mover to allow the 31 delegations? Trustee Grebbs and Trustee Pappen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So I'd like to welcome everyone that is here tonight for the Burlington Program in Accommodation Review Delegation Night. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is video voice recorded and that tonight we are being streamed onto the Internet and welcome those who are watching at MM Robinson High School and at home. I'd like to ask that everyone please silence anything that may make noise or turn it off. The Hallton District School Board acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of this territory and other Indigenous people for the use of this land in order for us to continue our work today. Tonight, we are having the second of two delegation nights. And we would like to acknowledge that it is a very emotional and sensitive topic and we'd like to be, ask our audience to be respectful of each and every delegation. According to our bylaw, any delegate or substitute spokesperson for a delegate is expected to refrain from the use of abusive language or from making any derogatory statement concerning the character or performance of named individuals, including students, staff, citizens, or trustees of the Hallton District School Board. Any delegate who violates this section during their presentation shall be ruled out of order by the Chair or Vice Chair and may be asked to discontinue their presentation. I'd also like to mention that as a delegation night, this is our opportunity to hear your views and perspectives. Trustees may ask questions of clarification, but any points that may be brought up during your delegation, trustees will then, if they need some clarification in the future...
Everyone, I am Joelle.
That's okay. If there's information that trustees require that have been brought up because of a delegation, they will ask it during their debate at the board table. So, we have now approved the agenda. So I would like to ask that we have our first delegation, who is Tracy Howard and Joel Howard Belcher, representing Robert Bateman High School.
Can I have some tech help to get a video up on the screen?
I'd like to welcome you and thank you very much for coming out tonight and we appreciate your coming. Before they start while the tech help is helping, I'd like to remind all delegations you have five minutes. In the corner here, there will be a stop clock and you will see the clock timing down. And at 30 seconds, I will give you a warning of that to wrap up. I would also like to let you know that after the 15th delegation, we will probably be taking a very short break before we start up again.
I have no idea.
We're just not sure what video it is.
No, if it's anything, it's Joelle.
I believe we're having a little bit of technical difficulties.
If it's not there, that's fine, I know it's under the trustees' afterword.
Thank you.
Okay. All right.
When you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Howard and this is my daughter, Joelle. She will be using her computer to begin our presentation this evening. After that, I will take an opportunity to share a few words. I had wanted to show a video with you, but unfortunately, tech issues are not going to allow that. I'm ready as you will. Clearly, she's excited to be here. All right. Now hopefully you can hear the video. I did hand out a transcript to each of you. You can follow along with that.
I am Joelle and I go to Bateman. I can talk doesn't mean I am dumb. My computer speaks for me when I'm smart. That's the only nice thing I'm saying tonight because I'm here to get in your head about the protection of Robert Bateman High School. To be perfectly honest with you, I'm bothered by your decision to close Bateman. I've spent seven wonderful years there and just to see it close now would be really disappointing. Seven wonderful years that no other students will get to experience if you close this school. It's the best school in Burlington. For special needs, we offer programs that no other high school in Burlington offers. We have the CPP, Community Pathways Program. For the last seven years, I've gone to this school and I can't tell you one thing, it absolutely doesn't deserve to close. The staff, the students, and the wide selection of programs are what makes it successful. We offer a Cosmo class and it's probably the most popular class we offer at Robert Bateman. Some of the other classes we offer at Bateman include Dodo, food school, drama, exploring our environment, social skills, woodworking, arts, language, math, and dance club. CPP has opportunities the students can get to do. They are best buddies, school trips, swim classes, and social nights. I love them all. They are the best. We offer a Cosmo class. I love this class. I get to learn all kinds of shampoo and names of French braids, paint nails, and how to wash her properly. You will see some of my videos and pictures. Our food school actually cooked for Gordon Ramsay and Prince Charles. Can you imagine how many miles from England they had to travel to come to Canada? That's not a two-hour trip and it's not cheap. I don't see why it's necessary to close this school. I hope I've made a good point. Enjoy my videos and pictures.
Now, I do need a few moments to turn off this system so that I can continue with my presentation. I hate to take the moment. We're getting there. All right, now that the computer is powered down, I will take the floor from Joelle quickly. I'm a single deaf mother of two children, two young girls. Joelle is my 20-year-old who's at Bateman. My other daughter is 17 and she goes to Aldershot. Now, my daughters have suffered and experienced a lot of bullying throughout their lives and childhood, but I want to focus on a few key points this evening around having a family with special needs children. We've spent a lot of time looking at opportunities for our children, educational opportunities near home that are affordable because goodness, they're too expensive and the accessibility must be there for our daughter in a wheelchair. If Bateman closes, there are going to be far too many accommodations that we're going to have to meet to serve our daughter's needs. Moving, transportation, other key services are paramount. Accessibility, interviewing staff, application processes, enrollment, waiting lists can incur half-year to full-year tardiness on the point of actually getting into the homes. There are assessments that are required with in-depth interviews and questionnaires of the family and Joelle herself. It is not easy to meet all these needs, not just in the community, but in the secondary school. Not all schools in our area have the special needs programings that Joelle needs. I can think of only four in the area. There are specialized changing rooms with clothing racks, accommodations in classrooms, courses that are fitted for our students, physical therapy opportunities, all of which are led by parent decisions in the IPRC process. Staff and teachers at Bateman understand how to work with our special needs students. Educational consultants provide psychoeducational analyses that take a lot of time to have done and conducted properly, that are however, required for any accommodation. Some special needs students suffer seizures, have short-term memory issues, have issues with retaining information, and all these must be considered to accommodate their needs. If our students, like my daughter, have to relocate, this will be very taxing on them to have to readjust to a new environment after having been finally habitualized to working at Bateman. Transitions are very difficult. As a single mother with my two daughters, moving from Hamilton, separating, changing our family, and doing away with unsavory services that were not satisfying our needs...
You're at 30 seconds.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll try my best to keep my points concise. It's very difficult to find a school that meets all the needs of our daughter. The CPP program at Bateman is paramount and far above the rest. It is headed by Ingrid Hearn, the principal of the program, who is absolutely phenomenal, diligently working to help all of our students. If this school closes, what will happen of her? What will happen to the legacy she's put in place? And we need to honor her before she leaves and takes retirement. We must ensure that Robert Bateman not close. The CPP program is so important to the livelihood of our children and I ask of you all to consider that and keep Robert Bateman open. Thank you very much. I do have more to say, but I do understand the time.
Thank you very much for your delegation and your perspective. Are there any comments or questions from trustees tonight? Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. So my understanding is that there was... Okay. My understanding is that there was also a video and I just wanted to say that I would love to also watch the video if a link could be provided.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
The video is around the cosmetology course offered at Bateman. It also looks at the special accommodations and special lift chairs that are used, fascinating pieces of equipment that are part of that CPP program at Bateman, which only speaks to the fact that we have to keep this school open. I do ask that you watch that video. You will understand our perspective of that much more.
If you can send us the video. Okay. Okay. Well, we've already received it and we will watch it later tonight.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I would like to thank both you, Tracy and Joelle, for coming out tonight and your presentation and we really appreciate you bringing your perspective.
Thank you very much for your time, attention, and patience getting our technologies and interpreters in place. I do want to thank both of the interpreters working this evening.
I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Cheryl Delut, representing Lester V. Pearson Welcome, Cheryl. Thank you for coming.
My name's Cheryl Delut.
I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
When you're ready.
I'm a proud parent of a grade 10 student at Lester V. Pearson High School. Many years ago, we noticed our daughter was not progressing in school as she should. With further testing, she was identified with a global learning disability. My husband and I advocated tirelessly for our daughter and we still do. She got the help she needed in the elementary stream, but we noticed the help was dwindling year after year to the cuts to the school board. The EAs at the school were stretched so thin, they were mostly used for students with physical disabilities. This is not ideal for all students, such as my daughter, who requires that extra support. As parents, we were very fearful when she was moving to high school, that she'd get lost in the cracks and that we would not be able to speak up and advocate for her. That was far from the case at Pearson. The smaller school environment where every teacher knows every student and every student knows each other was the right fit for our daughter. This environment gave my daughter confidence to succeed both academically and athletically. The resource team at Pearson is outstanding and took her under her wings and I'm proud to say she's made honor roll the entire grade nine year. What saddens me is the fact that Pearson could close, forcing these students to relocate to a bigger school environment, which will be detrimental to our daughter's learning and emotional well-being and to many other students who have emotional and intellectual disabilities. Disabilities come in all forms and I'm hoping you will consider the impact of closing schools on all the students. The current grade 10 students will be the most affected by these planned closures as they will be moving to an entire new school environment, not knowing any teachers, likely no chance of making school teams in their final year of high school. In a smaller school environment, our daughter had the opportunity to make many teams, which she otherwise might not have with increased competition in a bigger school. I know you keep saying it's all about the students. The students at Burlington are forming memories of their high school experiences that will be carried with them for life and this park process should not be one of those high school memories, but sadly, it will be. I am outraged to hear that the newest school, Dr. Frank Hayden, which has only been open for three years, is so overcapacity at 130%, forcing students to have gym in the halls, classroom in the staff lounge, cafeteria in the Burlington Public Library because the board's miscalculation on projected numbers, which will be ballooning up to 153%. How did this happen that those responsible can make such a huge error in planning is mind-boggling? But what is even more upsetting and disappointing to me as a parent is why is every other school in Burlington been disadvantaged because of the opening of Hayden? This school never needed to be built in the first place and now because of the board's mistakes, the other six remaining schools are being penalized? Another disturbing fact about this newest school, which is state-of-the-art, that has 12 portables currently in attempts to keeping up with the overcrowding. These portables have overtaken the parking lot and the citizens of Burlington can't gain access to the community center. This is a significant health and safety issue. If there was a medical emergency on the playing field, fire and EMS would not get to their patient in a timely manner. Under the watchful eye of the Hallton District School Board that we entrust our children with, you have watched Hayden explode with overcrowding and you've allowed Pearson to starve of students and I'd like to ask why? Pearson would be the answer to the overcapacity at Hayden. Currently, over 500 students arrive there each day by bus, 21 buses in fact. Since these students are already on the bus, instead of turning left to go to Hayden, they can easily turn right and go to Pearson and MM Robinson. I understand there are 1,800 empty pupil spaces in Burlington, 1,267 are south of the QEW. So this sounds like a South Burlington issue. So a proposed closure of a school in the North makes no sense at all. Forty years ago, Pearson was built to help alleviate the overcrowding at MM Robinson. Today, MM doesn't need our help, but Dr. Frank Hayden sure does. I work as a nurse in a busy hospital where we've adapted a timeout or patient briefing prior to any major procedure such as an operation. The whole team, from the surgeon, the anesthetist, to the nurses in the operating room, take a momentary pause prior to any operation, making sure they ask these questions. Is this the right patient, the correct surgery, and the right procedure? This allows the whole team to be on the same page, making sure they deliver the best care and carry out the right procedure.
You have 30 seconds.
I encourage the Hallton District School Board to take a timeout, which is a momentary pause in closing any schools in Burlington. I think the answer is to look at boundaries of schools and to fix the crisis of overcrowding at Hayden, moving those students back down to Pearson. Please be patient and take a timeout for approximately three to five years with a wait-and-watch approach and you'll see your students rise. With seniors downsizing and moving out of their homes, young families will be moving in. Closing schools is the wrong thing to do at this time. Schools are the center of our community and if the board closes one or two schools in Burlington, it will severely impact the way this city operates for many years to come.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Is there any comments or questions from trustees tonight on this delegation? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out tonight and your perspective. Thank you. I'd like to invite our next delegation up, Jason and Kelly Bartlett, representing Robert Bateman High School.
Yeah, that changes. Oh, yeah. Because... Would you want to sit in the middle, buddy? Would you want to sit there? I just gotta get to the computer.
And if you could introduce your son as well when you start. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair and other trustees, board staff, I thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Some of you may already know me in my capacity at SEAC as a member-at-large. I'm not here in that capacity tonight. I'm here as a parent of a student, or someone will, who's in the CPP program at Bateman and my wife Kelly. Since we are co-delegating, we have to bring him with us because we could not arrange a sitter.
Do you have some technical difficulties? Are you trying to show something?
I have it displayed here, but could it be shown on the larger screen? Thank you.
I've paused it till you've got it up, so...
Okay, this is the same handout that was distributed to all. I'll also follow up with an email copy of this so everyone can see it. So what I'm delegating about tonight is I realize this has been a long and difficult process for everyone involved. My main point is that closing Bateman High School is a high-risk and high-cost auction that really does not need to be exercised. Everyone knows why we had a par, but just for reference, it was due to low utilization and enhanced program delivery and learning opportunities as per the director's report. The unfortunate short version of this is that the report and recommendations within it do not solve really either of these issues. We're still going to have an imbalance of enrollment and really, other than adding essentials and LEAP to MMR, no new opportunities are created for learning, but some are certainly put at risk. There were really two choices, the main two choices that were in front of the par committee. The first one, and the director's original recommendation, closing Central and Pearson, received the most scrutiny of any of the options put forward. It has been carefully reviewed by board administration, staff, the park itself, and was one of the recommended options that came out of the park. Option 23 is one of the newest and least scrutinized options. It's the most expensive and requires replacing facilities that already exist. In the committee of the whole on April 26th and the director's presentation at SEAC on May 2nd, Director Miller was asked what has changed? And his response, and I do not mean to misquote this, is that Central was kept as a contingency and that is identified in his report on page 38, contingency in case there are issues with planning and new population downtown. And that the idea to close Bateman was suggested due to input from park surveys and the public. The issue at hand, in my opinion, is that there's nothing solid in the director's report to recommend this change. I've copied minutes from the park here, but they were more in favor of option 19 that recommended closing Central and Pearson. Two of the three surveys put out to the public were conducted in 2016. There was a very low response by Bateman parents because closure of Bateman was not an option then. That did not become an option until January. So why would anyone partake in a survey that had no effect on that? And there were no accommodations made for students with special needs. It was not an inclusive survey. I believe that those surveys are not an accurate representation of community opinion and should be removed from consideration. Leaving public input as the swing vote, I think it's really inappropriate that special interest groups held the amount of sway that they did on the final recommendation brought I won't read this to you, but these are from the park... I won't read this to you, but these are from the park's final meeting notes. I've highlighted the areas where they do have concerns about the option of closing Bateman and where they believe that the closing Central was actually a better choice for the students and the community. Here is just two shots, one showing a summary of the voter turnout for the town hall survey, and you can see it is impossibly skewed towards the one school. Similarly, the student survey had very low turnout by schools that were not in the original recommendation.
You have 30 seconds.
Oh my. Twelve and a half million is a lot to spend. These are the programs at Bateman, and I put forward to you that these are at risk, not because the facilities can't be built, but because you can't move the teachers. That's not within the authority of the board or the trustees. And I'll finish there. You have the rest of these slides, and I'll let my wife speak now.
Speaking of the trustees, the trustees have been invited to take a tour of the center. Only three have agreed, so I urge the rest of you to go take a look during the day when there's so much activity going on. Otherwise, how could you possibly consider closing a school without seeing what it has to offer? I had a lot more, but he took my time.
This turned out to be longer than I thought.
I'd like to thank each of you for coming out tonight. Are there any comments or questions for trustees tonight? Could we have the lights, please? Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. One thing that you said did twiddle me, you mentioned that you felt that special interest groups had had a significant impact on the recommendation. Could I ask for further clarification on that, please?
Well, there was a very strong social media and neighborhood campaign put out by the group, identified themselves as Save Central. I didn't mention at the beginning, but I actually live in that ward, so I saw some of what was going on. I read Counselor Meadward's newsletter, wherein she openly campaigned for the closure of Bateman, which honestly, I think is a conflict of interest and should have had her excluded from the park, but she wasn't, so.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Thank you. Are there any other trustee comments or questions? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jason and Kelly and Wilson, Will. I really appreciate your coming out tonight and bringing your perspectives. I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Elise Matthews, who is a community member.
Thanks.
When you're ready.
Depression, heart disease, mental health, high blood pressure, type 2 diabetes, obesity, anxiety. My name's Elise Matthews, and I'm here tonight as the mother of three children, as a small business owner, and as a concerned member of Burlington. I'm here to discuss the future health of our children. So the Canadian government recommends that our children get 60 minutes every day of exercise. I think we can all agree that they're not all getting that. You won't be surprised to hear that obesity in our children has nearly doubled between 1979 and 2004. Furthermore, our inactive, unhealthy teenagers go on to become inactive, unhealthy adults. The cost to us as taxpayers in Canada is estimated to be at $4.3 billion per year. You're probably asking, what does this have to do with the PAR process and with the future of Burlington? This is Jeff Speck. He's an urban planner in the United States. And Jeff Speck believes that the obesity epidemic we have in North America is actually an urban planning issue, and that the solution lies in the way we plan our cities. He wrote a book called The Walkable City: How Downtown Can Save America One Step at a Time. In it, he quotes that the biggest health crisis we have is one stemming from environmental-induced It's not just Jeff Speck who's noticed that walking, riding, rolling to school, having an active commute, having a purpose for going somewhere is beneficial. The University of Toronto has studied this extensively. They've noticed that kids who walk, ride, roll to school have higher academic performance, they're better at verbal and numeric reasoning, mentally, they're more pleasant, they're happier, they're more relaxed. Walking to school also offers personal growth as you make emotional bonds with your peers, you get to know other parents. It forms a community. Not surprisingly, it also helps form traffic and safety skills. When we look, the Halton District School Board already knows all the benefits that children get from an active commute to school. They know that exercise helps students to learn and to perform better at school, there's fresh air, I mean, it's cleaner environment. We don't have buses idling, parents idling outside the schools, and kids are way more likely to be in extracurricular activities. So not just sports, there's robotics, there's drama, all the other things that children have the opportunity to do if they don't have to worry about how they're going to get home. This isn't just the North American thing. If we look around the world, in Japan, they've had a walk-to-school practice since 1953. They have a 98% active commute rate. It's probably not surprising to learn that Japan also has one of the lowest childhood obesity rates in the world. This is a map of Mr. Miller's current recommendation. If we look at it, it covers Burlington quite well. I believe this allows the greatest number of students in Burlington to benefit from both the mental and the physical benefits of walking, riding, rolling to school. If you were to take out the circle in the middle for Central, you'd leave a big gap, and you'd be busing an extra 600 students when we don't need to. This is the kind of community, one where everyone can be active. That's where I want to raise my three children. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any comments or questions from trustees? Trustee Gray, then Trustee Gerbentz. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation. Will you be sharing this presentation electronically with the trustees, or has it been already?
If you'd like to have a copy, I'd love to share it with you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Trustee Gerbentz.
My question was just about the circles. I couldn't.
Oh yeah, so each circle represented, I can go back to it. Oh, it's not there anymore. Each circle represents a 3.2-kilometer radius around the school, and that's, I guess, what the school board thinks is a walking distance. So you can see there is some overlap there. I don't know exactly what the boundaries are, but it does a good job of covering our city. And I think Jeff Speck's right. I mean, it's an urban planning issue. He compared cities in Orlando, which is urban sprawl, and also found that Orlando had the highest BMI rates around versus cities like New York, Portland, which are very walkable. So, I mean, we've tried low-fat, high-protein, high-fat, low-carb, all the different diets have come around in the last 20 years, and yet our population keeps getting bigger. I really do think it's an urban planning thing, and I really hope that Burlington tries to become a walkable, agreeing community. Thanks again.
Thank you. Are there any other trustee comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much, Elise, for coming out tonight and sharing your perspective and your delegation.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'd like to invite our next delegate, Tammy Beatty, representing the Spec Special Education Advisory Committee. Welcome, Tammy.
Thank you.
Do you have a?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
When you're ready.
Thank you. Sure, you can. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of the Special Education Advisory Committee. During the park meetings, we sent a letter outlining our concerns and the items for the committee to consider as they looked at various options. The recommendation put forth by the director has not alleviated some of our concerns. This recommendation has a large number of students with special education needs moving, students with special education needs in a regular classroom setting, in a cluster, and in self-contained classes. Some of these students have very complex needs. Many are unidentified or have disabilities that may not be obvious or evident to everyone, and we are concerned. Our number-one concern is transitions for these students. There are many internal and external factors that come into play when you're dealing with students with complex needs. I'm going to focus on the external factors, since those are factors that are in our control. The environment. It is critical that the environment these students are moving into is ready for them. This includes all supports, technology, physical space, the culture and attitudes of students and staff. If the environment is not ready, you cannot guarantee their safety, dignity, or their ability to learn and thrive. How the transition is made. Have we given enough time for the student to adjust to the request? Have we discussed how this will happen and what that move will look like? We cannot expect all students to process this big of a transition quickly. Every student will process it differently. This is not a one-size-fits-all. Who else is transitioning with them? This includes other students, teachers, EA, admin, staff, et cetera. Our students need to be able to connect with the staff around them. This could include a custodian, an admin staff, or an EA that understands their needs. This area of staff transitions makes us very uncomfortable. You cannot guarantee that the staff who know these students' needs will move with them. Not only will be changing their environment, you could be potentially changing the people who work with them. Some of these students have worked with the same staff for five-plus years. We need to have a solid transition plan for each and every student with special education needs. In the recommendation put forward, we do not see a clear plan for transitioning, no indication of a transition committee, of timelines, of who would be involved. Our students cannot handle the uncertainty. We need more solid plans. If we do not transition these students properly, they can lose months of learning. Throughout the PAR process, you talked about the viability of English programming. Have you considered the viability of special education programming if you make the classes too small? For example, given the small number of gifted students enrolled at the secondary level, does it make sense to split them up between two schools? The recommendation does not outline in the plan for schisms and au-yap programs currently held at Pearson and Bateman. Pearson has three schisms in addition to an ECE dual-credit course with Mohawk College. Bateman has four schisms and four au-yaps. These are programs that children with special education needs access. You need to ensure we protect existing placements and programs, as this can be a human rights issue. The recommendation should give our children access to programs they currently have, or even more, by providing them with new opportunities. The supports they access right now need to be available after any transition. If they have access to a pool now, they need that access to continue. Another crucial point is that collaboration needs to occur between parents and the schools. Parents of children with special education needs are an extremely important member of any transition team. You cannot make this more difficult for the parents. They are your partners, and they know their children best. To ignore or wave aside their concerns and suggestions is to send the message that they aren't important in the process. In addition, it is critical that CAC and our associations
You have 30 seconds.
...be a part of any transition planning. Again, we know these children best, and we work with the families both inside and outside the education system. It is important that the advice of CAC be given weight in this decision. Please take advantage of our expertise. At the end of the day, we have the same goals: healthy, happy, and educated students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tammy, for your presentation on behalf of CAC. Is there any trustee comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out today and bringing the CAC perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite our next presenter, Jane Cooper-Kelly, who is a community member. And if you'd like to introduce your helper, fellow presenter.
Welcome, Peter.
When you're ready.
I think you'll have to speak in the microphone because it's on.
Good evening, trustees, Director Miller, and board staff. My name is Jane Cooper-Kelly, and I'm going to speak tonight about the geography of Burlington. This is an existing map of Burlington today. The Q.E.W. runs through the center of the city and divides it north and south. In the south, we have Aldershot School, Central School, Nelson, Bateman. In the north, M.M. Robinson, Pearson, and Hayden. Referencing the Halton District School Board's busing policy, the circles on the map represent the 3.2-kilometer walking radius of each school. The key point to observe is where there is significant standalone and significant overlap in the radiuses. Overlap indicates that the students are within walking distance of more than one school. Looking at Aldershot, the walking radius has very little overlap. Looking at Central, there's some overlap, but a significant amount of it is standalone. With Nelson and Bateman, there's significant overlap. With M.M., Pearson, and Hayden, there's also significant overlap. Another observation that can be made is the distances between the school. For example, in the south, there is a distance of 6.4 kilometers between Aldershot and Central, 5.3 kilometers between Central and Nelson, and 1.9 kilometers between Nelson and Bateman. We'll move to the next map, please. This next map is the situation in Burlington as proposed by the director's recommendations. The map shows the same walking radiuses, but around five schools. As you can see, The key point to observe is where there is significant standalone and significant overlap in the radiuses. Overlap indicates that the students are within walking distance of more than one school. Looking at Aldershot, the walking radius has very little overlap. Looking at Central, there's some overlap, but a significant amount of it is standalone. With Nelson and Bateman, there's significant overlap. With MM, Pearson, and Hayden, there's also significant overlap. Another observation that can be made is the distances between the school. For example, in the south, there is a distance of 6.4 kilometers between Aldershot and Central, 5.3 kilometers between Central and Nelson, and 1.9 kilometers between Nelson and Bateman. We'll move to the next map, please. This next map is the situation in Burlington as proposed by the director's recommendations. The map shows the same walking radiuses, but around five schools. As you can see, it's a much more simplified map with considerably less overlap. The recommendations allow for a school in each community across the city. In the southwest community, we have Aldershot. In the south-central community, we have Central. In the southeast community, Nelson. In the northwest community, MM Robinson. And in the northeast community, Hayden. The recommendations reduce busing, minimize the number of students that are bused north to south across the QEW. As quoted in the director's report, these recommendations will allow for a geographic balance in the city of Burlington. In conclusion, I encourage this board to be a part of the solution. Bring decades of stability to student accommodation in Burlington and all of Halton by voting to support Recommendation 23E. Make this your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you very much Jane. Is there any comments or questions from trustees, trustee collared?
Just an observation, I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but it's a 3.2 walking distance, not a 3.2 radius for our busing policy. So it's not like it's a circle around the school. It's actually a mapped-out walking distance. So some of your circles are actually much bigger than they actually would be if you are mapping out a walking path. And my question for you would be, have you also plotted what it would look like if Nelson closed and Bateman stayed open? I think you would have even less overlap.
Could you pass the mic?
I'm sorry.
In response to your, in response to your question, our reading of the board policy does not talk about a walking distance. Okay, well, I'll have to reread it, and I will. And your second question with respect to a smaller radius?
Would, would your circles have less overlap if Nelson were to close instead of Bateman?
Yes, they would. You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none? Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just would like to have access to the materials from the presentation?
I have it here.
Thank you.
I'll hand it to someone. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to thank Jane and Peter for coming out tonight and your presentation and the perspective that you brought tonight. Thank you. I'd like to invite our next delegate, Dr. Lisa Van Zust from Nelson High School. Welcome Lisa.
Good evening, thank you.
When you're ready.
I strongly believe that no school should have to close. Every school has its own unique and amazing attributes and every student should have, should be able to attend a school in their local area. This evening, I am here to speak from my heart as an advocate, as a parent, of a future, of two future Nelson students. My family moved to Ontario just under three years ago from Nova Scotia. After a lot of consideration, consideration and research into schools, we chose to move to South Burlington. We could not be more pleased. It was the success and reputation of the Nelson and Tuck schools that was our ultimate decision to relocate to this area. We looked specifically at the Fraser Institute rankings as well as the proximity of schools to our new home when making this decision. We were impressed by the continued academic and co-curricular success of both Nelson and Tuck schools. When the consideration to close Nelson was put forward, one of my biggest concerns for my children and for other students across this board was that it would result in almost all of the feeder elementary schools having split cohorts. As a doctor, I am well aware of the mental health implications of splitting, splitting social networks, especially during pinnacle transition years of developing vulnerable teenagers. This can be very detrimental to our youth and have long-lasting negative side effects. My children in particular would be split from all of their key social supports if Nelson was to close. But this is not just for me and Nelson, this is for other students in other schools that end up with split cohorts. Making a transition to a new school is hard enough, but to do it with and eliminating social supports could be devastating. Though I appreciate Nelson is not recommended for closure, I feel it's important to reaffirm the viability of Nelson for a growing community. Nelson has a healthy utilization rate and the feeding catchment continues to grow, attracting young families such as mine. You only have to look around at our community, the houses that are going for sale, they're being replaced by young families. And this is happening all across South Burlington. Nelson is a school that excels in academics, music, arts, athletics, the GIFTA program, and French immersion. It is one of the top-rated schools in the province, attracting families and students from all over the country. It is internationally recognized for academic and athletic excellence. And it also has one of the top graduating, graduation rates in Halton at 92.5% with graduates from Nelson being very well looked upon when applying to universities. Nelson is not just a physical building. It is experienced, the atmosphere and has, that has been created and supported by the students, staff, and the community, community over the generations. My children and many others are currently able to take a short walk to schools. In the era of excessive screen time and childhood obesity, exercise is extremely important to our youth. In a recent Danish study, part, it was part of a mass experiment, research examined the link between diet, exercise, and the power to concentrate. The study examined nearly 20,000 students aged 5 to 19. It found that children who walked or cycled to school performed measurably better academically on task-demanding concentration, such as solving puzzles, than those students that were bussed or driven. It was suggested that the effect lasted up to four hours after arriving to school. The results showed that having breakfast and lunch has an impact, but not nearly as much as compared to exercise. Fresh air has a positive impact on mood. Walking to school helps build independence and self-confidence in our youth, not to mention a cleaner environment for all of us and a level of community awareness. The Halton District School Board emphasizes walk and wheel-to-school. Nelson provides a community facility that is used daily, not only by students that attend it, but also by the surrounding community. Facilities such as this creates happy, healthy families and happy, healthy communities, and ultimately, a better Burlington. Closing schools result in hundreds of students requiring busing and a huge financial and resource commitment from the board.
30 seconds.
There is already a significant bus shortage in Halton. Children's inability to walk to and from school would also limit their ability to take part in co-curricular activities, considering that most are either before or after school. For many students, this is their only opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities. This can also result in social divides. I'm well aware of the negative comments made by a couple of students that have surfaced across social media. It is important to know that those comments do not represent Nelson, the student body, the school, or the community as a whole. All students are welcome and embraced by, in the Nelson community. Lastly, as people who can affect this decision, I implore you to consider the welfare of our children in Halton first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you Lisa. Are there any comments or questions from trustees tonight? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much Lisa for coming out tonight and sharing your perspective in the delegation. I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Diane Miller, representing Lester B. Pearson High School. Welcome Diane.
Thank you.
When you're ready.
As a parent of a alumni of Lester B. Pearson and a current student at LBP and another in the IB program at Bateman, this recommendation deeply impacts our family. There are a couple of threads I would like to weave this evening. My starting point is Director Miller's own words. "We did not go into this field to close schools." As I have said in written communication, if this principle is to be reflected, then that should be the starting point of any discussion and with determination and exhaustive input from all parties, the outcomes as well. What voices have been included in the process and which ones have been missing? In business, during a review, one has a 360, a look at from every perspective. Let's look at it from the board's perspective or values which are on the wall. Accountability, creativity, empathy, integrity, equity, collaboration. These values are highlighted in your multi-year plan. Has due diligence been met in each area of these values? I would argue no. Creativity and collaboration stand out to me as areas deeply flawed in this process by missing partners. Where has the voice of the teachers been? They are with our children for almost seven hours of the day, yet they have been kept silent, not given a place at this discussion table. The ones who are told to dig deep, to be creative with our children, were not involved in solving a problem impacting these very same children we entrust with their education. What about the students? My son and daughter felt their voices were not heard in this process. One felt it was a done deal, the other distraught at the thought of her school being segmented. Besides the student survey, why are they not represented at the PAR table? We hold contests, think bowls, scientific, robotic, and math competitions, all utilizing their brains, but not on how to save their school. None of the questions in the student survey touched on their creativity or ingenuity for keeping their school off the chopping block. Yet they, just like their teachers, are most impacted by this decision. Mental wellness professionals, why were they not given a seat at the table? LBP was deliberately built as a smaller school setting, a school to provide for relief for the overcrowding at MM Robinson. How ironic that it is poised to be a solution to Hayden in the same capacity, and yet this time, instead of relief, it faces closure. Study upon study reflects the benefits of a 600 to 800 high school population. The benefits have already been highlighted by past speakers. Bateman serves a broad sector of school, student education needs, yet no seat was given at the PAR table as to the impact of these school closures. We finally had a chance to hear on Monday from Autism Speak. She had five minutes to share the multi-level complexities a student with autism faces. Anxiety, the unknown, fear, bullying, social awkwardness, isolation, et cetera, all have been amplified for some of our most vulnerable students. Their teachers could have shared the impact they are witnessing. The social worker, mental wellness person could have stated the obvious. Why did they have no voice? What about our elected city reps and planning departments? While I realize that each area is independent, trustees and city councilors, a decision of this magnitude should gather input from everyone. Instead, we sit in silos protectively guarding our territory versus welcoming other creative minds to the table. Today, as the public, we are given five minutes to race through our concerns in person. How is our voice really being heard face-to-face in a meaningful, two-way discussion? Issues that as a group we could have raised and discussed are innovative ideas, ways to address underutilization by renting out some of the community, spaces to community partners, rather tutoring businesses, driver ed, other co-op programs such as LBP's Co-op Nursery. As a collective, we could have discussed ESL needs at a north-south school. A hub especially since the board likes and wants and is attracting students from abroad as high school students into the fold. Has the latter even been considered in the student numbers and projections? We could have, as we have for LBP, provided resolutions to overcrowding issues at one school and underutilization at another.
You have 30 seconds.
Members of the LBP committee got creative. I'm gonna have to jump right to the end then. Be visionary, be creative, be innovative, be accountable, be emphatic, be collaborative in the fullest sense of the word by including all voices at the table. Help this process and the ultimate decision to be one that does uphold the integrity of the duty entrusted into your care, our children, and financial resources. So please hear my voice and the voice of others. Thank you.
Thank you very much Diane. Are there any comments or questions from trustees for our delegate?
I'm done. Sorry about that.
Trustee Elle Harrison.
Thank you, through you Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. You were about to say how members of the community got creative and then you skipped to the end. So my question to you is briefly, if you could say how members of the LBP community got creative? I would appreciate that.
Thank you. We provided resolutions to overcrowding issues at one school and the underutilization at the other is what I was starting to talk about and getting creative because we actually flipped the issue. Instead of taking the premise of we have underutilization in programming, tell us which schools to close, we started with the premise of we did not go into the field of closing schools and came up with ways to make that fact a true statement. And what we looked at was the whole equity of why we don't give equal weighting and concern to overcrowding as to underutilization and looked at how you redrew the boundaries, how you attracted students. I know Rory Nissen has already provided a detailed plan of how you switch the numbers and you actually make all three schools in the north to 88%. And so it was a matter of looking at what partnerships we could have added in to provide financial support for having CPR and tutoring, renting some of the spaces as a placeholder. While we adjusted boundaries, so you both had financial resources and the boundary change, while having a placeholder as the north growth increased, but also the transition within the community. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from trustees?
Right, okay.
Seeing none, thank you very much Diane for your presentation and your perspective. Appreciate it. I'd like, the next delegation has withdrawn, so we will go to, I'd like to invite Tom Muir up, who is a community member. Welcome Tom.
Good evening trustees, staff. Yeah, I have a couple of opening remarks. These are fateful days and fateful decisions before us. In my opinion, you are either gonna decide to destroy the community of schools in Burlington or you will decide to sustain it with constructive measures that are many within your power to implement. I want to ask you before, that before you try to fix what you are looking at, check closely what you are looking through. A proverb says, "Got a dirty eye, see a dirty world. Got a dirty window, see a dirty world." That's what I saw. What plan got us to this disposition we are, to the PAR Condition 1 surplus seats? And how is this dirty window casting gray? The first thing I found when I looked into this was that Hayden, the northeast Burlington school in its early planning days, was built with seemingly no regard or public disclosure for the consequences that were built right into the plan from the start. Surplus seats in the other Burlington high schools and Hayden bursting at the scene, at the seams. This data was right in back as far as 2008. You can see in their, in their planning, boundary, and feeder changes and construction that the board did this. Back in 2008, there are proof of plans in board reports of student numbers to be moved to Hayden from the other schools at 1,000 and through the redirected from the feeders would be another 500. I did not see anything in writing describing why this happened. What was the rationale for building what were just clearly like 1,500 surplus seats in the south of Burlington? There, there was nothing to be, to be found. The 2009 plan showed Hayden overflowing with students within three years of opening. And MM would be cut in half and Bateman would be cut in half in round numbers, Nelson a little bit. To repeat, Bateman was targeted before 2009. And in fact, in the, in the Ministry Capital Priorities template, its planned utilization was at 43.9% and it was colored in red, so there was a warning light going on there. All of these declines directly coincided with Hayden's projected opening at the time. The more recent data, the current situation, low utilization paints an even worse picture. Two schools, now, now it's four schools that are on the decline. Most of them, if you add- Two schools, now it's four schools that are on the decline, most of them, if you average it out, to be cut from high 90s to, to 50. What to me this looks like, and it angers me, is this, this plan was ill-conceived in 2008 and 2009, and it's a plan that, that really was designed to stuff the northeast Burlington School with 1,200 students and another 300 in portables. At the same time, they were, it was based on choking the life out of four of the six schools in the south. And then 10 years later, blame the victims, and here we are. And now the victims are pitted one against the other to try to keep their school open. That should not have been done. But this, this board never mentions this. This is the dirty window that I found. In the finances, there's only $2 million saved in Mr. Director Miller's report from operating costs. I was very surprised that it's that low. You're not gonna buy much courses and improved conditions in par number, par condition two from that. When the schools close, that's the only money that will be left. What kind, that's only like 0.003% of the board's budget. Planning for future, the province says we gotta grow by 500,000 people. This is discounted in the board's report. Are there gonna be no more children? There's been no risk assessment done. I think that the risk management of using, keeping these schools would be a low-cost reserve that can be seen as risk insurance.
You have 30 seconds.
You could sell the schools, you'll get pods, you won't be able to buy, build one, even half of another school with what you'll get from the pods. The program improvements for students, I don't see any, I've asked for them, I didn't get any definite action. What the residents and parents want, they're here, they're telling you loud and clear they want all their schools, keep your hands off of them. What I ask you is, to ask you to clearly see what you're looking to fix, your any work in this fateful decision is like the ordinary art of window washing. Look clearly at what you are being provided.
Thank you, Tom.
Choose not the destructive path the board recommends, and just in one final phrase, don't make that path of destroying the community of schools in Burlington, the legacy of this board of trustees. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any comments or questions from trustees tonight? Seeing none.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you very much for coming out and your presentation and your perspective. I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Debbie Wakem, representing Robert Bateman High School. Welcome, Debbie.
Hi, thank you.
When you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me to delegate on behalf of my children and my community. My name is Debbie Wakem, and I'm a mama four, one who graduated from Bateman two years ago, two who are presently attending Bateman, and one who would very much love to start grade nine at Bateman in 2018. I'm deeply concerned about Director Miller's recommendations, and I believe that the overwhelming response of our community is worth listening to. Our community has been told that the recommendations which have been made are not about money. We were told it was not a decision based on financial reasons, but rather on breadth of programming. We have been told that based on projected enrollments, some schools may not be able to offer every student the same courses that are available in other schools. Here's my concern: no one asked me or my children if this is a problem for us. My son takes an online course. He doesn't feel underserved or short-changed, in fact, he enjoys it. For him, this approach is flexible and accessible, and it worked. At the meeting of the whole on April 26th, it was argued by the board staff that one problem with lack of course availability was that students were required to take online courses. However, later in the same meeting, it was discussed that e-learning was a positive thing and that the HDSB were leaders in the expansion of this approach to education and learning. The two messages seem at odds. One might wonder how the addition of more choice and flexibility through online courses can be seen as a negative. In my son's case, it was highly positive. We've also been told that at bigger school, you have fewer course conflicts. While this may be true, is it the most important thing? My kids have learned to make their schedules work. They are fulfilling their course requirements while also getting to take photography, cooking, baking, cosmo, auto mechanics, auto body, construction, phys ed, and the list goes on. Bateman students continue to manage to be successful. They are earning scholarships and being accepted into colleges and universities around the world. This is a time when online courses will offer students increased choice and flexibility. It's a perfectly good 21st century solution. This is working for my kids and the Bateman community. Our kids are happy and thriving. Isn't that exactly what we want for our kids? Speaking of happy and thriving, I would like to speak about the students and our community pathways program. They will have no additional breadth of programming with this move. In fact, they will lose, among other things, their easy access to Centennial Pool. We've been told that a small therapy pool could be built at Nelson. That seems a lot like physio and a lot less like fun. It seems to me to be the minimum to check a box, and it's at an added cost to taxpayers. These kids are happy to be at Bateman. This should be a huge factor in the decision-making process. And I'll share a secret with you: they don't care about the phrase "purpose-built." This means absolutely nothing to them, and we as adults must stop pretending that this phrase means everything will be perfect. Simply put, it means built to serve a purpose. These students are already being served purposefully at Robert Bateman High School. They are thriving in the large wheelchair-accessible hallways and learning spaces. Undoubtedly, some changes need to be made. As it stands, Bateman has less than two feeder schools. With the recent change to Pineland's French immersion program, we will now be down to lesson one. Why not level the playing field out a bit by adjusting boundaries? Why not add French immersion to Bateman? These are creative ideas I am hearing from passionate individuals in our school communities. There are so many fiscally and socially viable solutions that would increase programming while allowing Bateman to remain open. While I realize that the Director of Education believes that it's complex, there are lots of people who have simple answers to complex problems, I firmly believe that this community does understand the complexity of the issue and has presented numerous innovative and creative recommendations which would allow you to keep all schools open. Remember what you heard from John Norris from the National Automotive Trades Association and his recommendation on expanding the best auto body program in Canada to develop as a center of excellence at Bateman. Talk about a magnet school. You've heard others talk about taking that concept and developing other skilled trades programs. While the director argues that his staff has worked hard at looking for workable solutions, in just three weeks since the director released his report, the Bateman community has dug deep and come up with far more solutions which demonstrate a clear understanding of the challenges faced by the board. If closing schools is the best that the board can present for creativity, I think we have a much bigger issue. We need your support. We need you to hear us and our children, and we need you to partner with us to explore some or all of the options that we have presented to you.
You have 30 seconds.
We need you to reward innovation and foster community that is clearly palpable. We need to keep Robert Bateman open, a school that offers something for each and every type of learner that enters its doors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I ask the audience to hold your applause? You've been very good at being respectful, and I'd ask that to continue. Is there any trustee comments or questions? Trustee Danielle Lee, then trustee Coler.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated your presentation and all the presentations we've heard on the two nights. You referenced a significant number of options, and I will recognize, we've gotten a number of emails, but I will be honest with you, I'm receiving 70, 80, 90 emails a day, and it's quite possible that some of those options might not have received the attention that they otherwise would have at a time when it was not so high. Is it possible for you to put together a concise list of those options and forward it to trustees, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Coler.
Thank you. So not all of the schools that offer the CPP and our board have an indoor swimming pool right beside it. Could you explain to me why Centennial Pool is so important to the CPP program at Bateman?
Yeah. In Burlington, the two schools that offer the CPP program, MM has an indoor pool that they can access. In fact, and it's not just the CPP kids that use the pool, there's a Bateman swim team. I believe this year they sent three to OFSA. Not sure how they're gonna practice in a therapy pool. It's probably a race I could win. So yeah, it's gonna take away from the kids, but when you speak of the CPP kids, some of them have it in their IEP that they have access to a pool. So the answer was, we'll bust them from Nelson. You're taking time out of their learning and instruction. In the winter, most of these kids need help getting ready and dressed for the outdoor, going out. Slip and fall, you know, where they are now, it's a safe and easy and accessible and fun part of their day, where it doesn't feel like physio, because they have a whole giant pool to go into. It's, I think it's really important to them and to all the kids. And to move it to Nelson, you're actually taking it away. You do not have equity anymore if the kids at MM have a pool and the kids at Bateman don't. We have to just call it what it is. It's not gaining anything for the CPP kids, it's taking something away. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other trustee comments or questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none, I'd like to thank you, Debbie, for coming out tonight and bringing us your perspective. I'd like to invite our next delegate, Steve Cousins from Aldershot High School.
Welcome, Steve. Thank you.
When you're ready.
I'm sure you've heard from the peanut gallery already that I'm not to ask about any additional meetings or hours for these meetings, so I won't. My name is, thank you first of all for allowing me to delegate, and my name is Steve Cousins, and I am a Burlington resident, and it is my home Burlington. For the last 18 years, I've resided in Aldershot, and it is a wonderful community. I have two children currently in the Halt and Board system, both in French immersion, both, my oldest daughter went through Maplehurst through French immersion, look forward to her extension into her elementary last two years at Aldershot as a great way to get ready for high school, and now resides at Aldershot in high school in grade 11. My younger daughter is still at Maplehurst and French immersion in grade five, and is very excited about the concept of following in her sister's footsteps about the transition from elementary at Aldershot Public to Aldershot High School. I just wanted to give you a bit of background, I'm very passionate about our city of Burlington, our community of Aldershot, most importantly, our students in Burlington. I made the misstep back in, I think, November, and put my name into a hat for becoming a park member. I really never won at anything or was chosen for anything, and I was quite astonished that I was chosen for, to be a park member. It was actually, it became quite a, quite a rewarding process for me. I felt very honored that I could represent the Burlington students. I think that my fellow committee members, and I do want to make this clear, we all advocated for every student in Burlington in every one of our meetings and our thoughts. Of course, we represented our communities, and so we were always going to make sure our community was discussed and, and back. So I do welcome, I do commend my fellow committee members for doing that. Being that we all only get five minutes, as I've heard a couple times already, I guess I should get to the point. I actually, I'm going to delegate on two topics, and they're both in relationship to Aldershot. I feel I did my time in the committee to deal with the bigger picture of the city of Burlington, and it's now time for me to talk about my community and why I think it's such an important community. Aldershot is not represented effectively in the report by Director Miller with respect to its growth, in my opinion. I have talked to, and I believe you received some notes from me, from Rick Craven, who is the counselor for Ward One, which Aldershot is in. Did you get the notes on that? Okay, so, Rick, the, the reports and how it shows Aldershot as a growth community and how that would represent into students entering our, both our elementary and high school system in this community, I believe is very underestimated, and I believe that Rick Craven's report to me, which you have, I believe, got the copy of, certainly spells that out. There is a significant increase in growth in builds already planned, some already approved, and some to be approved, which represents thousands of, of homes being built that are, are very designed to bring the kind of families that bring students into our system. So I don't believe that this is actually part of the report, and so I think there's a misstep in that process. There's also an additional large body of land, a plot of land in West Aldershot, again, walking distance to the school, that hasn't been discussed in Rick Craven's report, and it actually represents, from all of the discussions with Rick Craven and the city, another 900 to 1,000 units, that would be townhomes, homes, again, the type of, the type of demographics that would allow for more students to come into Aldershot. So I really ask that you, and I know this is a very fluid process for you still, and I know that, I know what's being recommended, but I want to make sure Aldershot's voice is heard. As we, in Aldershot, and I've had many conversations with our community, we are a very viable community, and we know we're a small school, but we have growth, we have significant growth, and that should be considered, or any thoughts that you have in your, in your recommendations? So probably I only have, there you go, not much time left. So I'd like to talk briefly then about the concept that in the, unfortunately, the only thing I saw as a positive result of the recommendation was the concept of a theme school for Aldershot. We already have a, really a theme school already in process, but without really much support from the system.
You have 30 seconds.
We work with the Royal Botanical Gardens, and I'm sure, hopefully, you all know who that is, and we actually have the only regional credit program for eco-environmental studies. It is, it is a phenomenal program, and it's a four-credit semester program that would actually allow students to leave their high school years and be already ready for a very specialized field moving forward. The environment is something I know the Halt and Board of Education is very much interested in growing, and we already have that whole body, both the public and the, and the schools, and the commitment by the educators to grow that, that place. So again, thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you, you get through this.
Thank you, Steve. Is there any comments or questions for our delegate tonight? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out, your delegation and your perspective.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to invite our next delegate, Jeffrey Hong Ma from Robert Bateman High School. Welcome, Jeffrey.
Hi.
And you've got some other people with you, can you please introduce them?
Yeah, so my name is Jeffrey, as she mentioned, and these are fellow students from Robert Bateman. This is Hassan, Jackie, and Vanessa. Can I start?
Go ahead.
All right. So, yeah, so we're here from Robert Bateman High School, and we hope to discuss the ramifications of the possible closure of our amazing community. We'll be speaking from our perspective as both members and leaders within our student community. Just to give you guys some background, the group of us, we've organized a great number of Robert Bateman's plethora of extracurricular activities, including our charity fashion show, our Muslim Student Association, and countless others. Through these experiences in leading and working within our highly diverse school community, we've observed firsthand that Robert Bateman High School's vibrant student culture emerges uniquely from the intersection of an immutable spectrum of diversity, a structure which will be irreversibly dismantled upon the closure of Robert Bateman High School. We believe that the demolition of this community and the subsequent separation of various diverse pathways would represent a great loss of culture and opportunity, and ultimately emerges a great disservice to not only the members of our immediate community, but that of the broader Burlington community as a whole. We'll be speaking a little bit to the nature of extracurricular involvement at Bateman to start. So although Bateman, as I mentioned before, has literally dozens of different clubs, I'll be speaking to one that's especially close to my heart, Youth in Action, which is a philanthropic group in our school that is student-run. I've had the great honor of being a member for four years and helping lead for three years. We raise money for an annually-rotated philanthropic cause. In the past, we've raised money for the Halt and Learning Foundation and the Reach Out Center for Kids, both community groups, and over the past four years have been able to raise almost $10,000. And we draw support from students from every single stream in our school, from CBP to Essentials to IB. And despite our declining population, we've been able to maintain our yearly fundraising goals, which is truly a testament to the culture of compassion in our student community. I'll briefly pass the baton on to my friend Hassan to talk to some other curriculars.
Good evening, honorable trustees. My name is Hassan, and I've had the honor of being the president of the Muslim Students Association at Robert Bateman High School, in addition to being involved in numerous other extracurriculars, including student council and best buddies. I came to Bateman in grade 10 after having spent a year abroad and was immediately stunned by the incomparable atmosphere of inclusivity and acceptance at Bateman. My initial experience has only been enhanced over the last three years that I've had the privilege of becoming more involved in the school community, and having witnessed the support for extracurriculars, I can attest that I have never come across a more spirited and diverse student population. I implore you tonight to reconsider your recommendation to close Robert Bateman and take into account the immovable spirit of student life at Robert Bateman, and would like to pass it back to Jeffrey.
So in hearing of these initiatives, you may be asking yourself, in the event of Bateman's closure, why can't they simply be moved to another school? Ultimately, the answer to this query lies within the unique environment and demographics of Bateman, as arguably one of the most diverse schools in Burlington. Many of these events are only possible due to the collaboration of our various, of our school's various streams, symbiotic relationships, which will be irreversibly untethered following Bateman's closure and their separation. For example, many of these initiatives began as and continue to serve as caste projects for our IB students, mandatory community initiatives undertaken by all IB diploma candidates. Thus, when you look at events like our Culture Fusion Festival, we see amazing Thus, when you look at events like our Culture Fusion Festival, we see amazing, we see amazing examples of such symbiosis. For example, this is an event usually organized by IB students with food provided by our OYAP students and other food provided by cooking school and draws performances from students of countless different backgrounds and from all different streams. Another example of this is our Best Buddies program, wherein our students are given the amazing opportunity to work with and bond with their peers from our CPP stream. There are just a few examples of the significant impact of our unique demographics and diversity in maintaining our vibrant school culture. In closing, I'd like to speak about one final extracurricular, our school community Facebook page, Humans at Robert Bateman. This is a community social media page which shares the stories of our community members from all streams and backgrounds. In light of the possibility of Bateman's closure, the students running the page have been interviewing their peers in regards to their feelings on the matter and this quote by Katie, one of our CPP community members, I found to be especially poignant. When asked about what she loved about Bateman, Katie responded, "I love everything about the school. I have Down syndrome and I always have fun. I'm able to learn, I'm able to focus. I love the school because I can fit in and everybody feels accepted." Although as trustees and making a final decision, you will of course and very appropriately have to consider a whole bunch of factors. I implore you to please consider the aspects of a school which don't show up only on a calculator or on a misinterpreted graph. Thank you.
Thank you very, ah, excuse me, thank you. I'd like to thank you for your presentation. Is there any comments or questions from trustees, trustee called?
Thank you. I gather that you are in grade twelve and will be graduating this year. So my question to you is, since you are leaving the school prior to the outcome of whatever decision we make, why is it so important to you to delegate to save Bateman?
Right, so to give some sort of personal background. For me, for me, I've been to three different schools so far. And in elementary school I had to change schools because I wasn't the gifted program. So I have, I have had to experience what it's like to have to go to a new school environment after being in one for a really long time. So I know firsthand how hard it is and I really do feel like if Bateman were to close, the transition would be extremely harder on our academic stream and those stream students, but would be even harder on our CPP students. As I mentioned before, one of the amazing opportunities at our school is the Best Buddies program, where we get a partner and form bonds with these CPP students. And I have had the honor and privilege of being a part of this for the past two years. And I personally have, I feel greatly for our students in this program and believe that if Bateman were to close and these students would have to be moved, it'd be a really big disservice to them and a huge inconvenience to their learning. Also, I feel, I can, I feel like I can speak for almost, for all students of Bateman when I say that. The culture at Bateman between the students and the teachers is amazing and it really does help facilitate greater learning. Just to speak a little bit to the academic legacy of Burlington, and I'm sure you're all aware of this, but I'll just reinforce it. Last year, if you may recall, all three, all the top three students in Houghton all came from Bateman and they weren't all just IB students, they're from all, they're from across our streams. Like, these were students that had like averages above ninety-nine percent and I think it really does testify to how strong our culture is at Bateman.
Thank you. Trustee Pappen.
Thank you, thank you for sharing your information about Bateman and your pride in your school. I just wanted to ask for a little clarification. You mentioned that you had changed schools three times. Did you ever have a good experience in changing schools?
For me, the, when I was changing schools, all the good experiences came from the bonds I was able to make at another school, but in saying that, it definitely was personally, I found very, very taxing because I had to leave a lot of my friends, of course, at my old school. And I do think it is a lot better, in my opinion at least, to have the opportunity to have more stable learning environment.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight and your delegation. We appreciate your coming out and bringing your perspective.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our next delegation, Maeve Fitzgerald representing Robert Bateman High School. Is Maeve here? I don't see her coming forward. Maeve, are you here? I believe that she's not here this evening, so we'll mark that as withdrawn. And I will ask Cassie White to come up representing Robert Bateman High School. Welcome Cassie.
Hello, my name is Cassie and I'm a grade twelve student at Robert Bateman High School. My past four years at Bateman have been amazing. I've been part of many activities and extracurriculars such as the field hockey team and fundraising events, but I believe that my experience at Bateman can be, really be owed to the community. I've never been a part of a more inclusive, accommodating and enjoyable environment. I'm so grateful for the relationships I have formed with teachers and students of all streams. Bateman is really accommodated to my needs. Personally, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to take online courses. Working part-time, this gave me the flexibility I needed. Going to Bateman, I can look back on my high school experience and be happy, knowing I had such an amazing time and am fully prepared for my adventures in university. Please choose to keep Bateman open so that future students in the same shoes as me can have such a great experience. I put together this video to show you some of the students who would be hurt if you voted to close our school. They benefited from using the pool and having access to the woodworking and classes and other programs. These students are important to us and they made our school a more compassionate place to be. You need to know that if you voted to close Bateman, students like these would be affected because there is no way the environment at Bateman could be duplicated at a new school. I hope you can see through these students who this closure would affect and why Bateman, why the Bateman community and the way the programs work together cannot simply be relocated. Okay, sorry everyone.
No worries, we understand technical difficulties.
Dear trustees, my name is Erin, I'm twenty years, I'm twenty-two years old. I was in the pathway program with co-op program.
Dear trustees, I'm Andrew and I am in LEAP.
Dear trustees, my name is Mer, I'm fourteen years old and I, and I'm in Life Skills Program. I'm in Robert Bateman.
Hello, my name is Mehme, I'm Mer's father and he's grade nine in Robert Bateman this year in Life Skills Program.
Hi trustees, I'm Camilla Pickin, I am twenty years old, I'm a past graduate of Robert Bateman High School.
Dear trustees, my name is Matthew, I'm in grade nine pre-IB from Robert Bateman High School.
I like all the, I like the programs and I make a lot of friends. My favorite thing to do, to, at school, hanging out with my friends at lunchtime.
And I like it because you can do like other, different kinds of programs, like cooking, auto body, and you can, and swimming, and you can also observe people in the cafeteria in LEAP.
And if you separate all the programs, they're not formed together and they don't bring all partnerships like they would if they were at Bateman.
What I like about Bateman the most is how inclusive and how nice the teachers are. Like, I missed a lot of school earlier in the year because of karate and this organization I'm based, I'm involved in and the teachers are so forgiving and giving me extensions and all that good stuff.
Yeah, I like going every day because it has, because it has a lot of programs that you can, that I can do.
My favorite thing about, one of my favorite things about Robert Bateman High School is that I was able to do, participate in co-op programs.
At school, I'm involved in the robotics team, which it was really good for our school because it's a bunch of grade nines who are trying to develop. But if you separate us from this, then we can't develop together. Also, the Reach team at our school is a great group of kids who like doing trivia questions and if you shut down this school, we won't be able to do these fun programs and clubs like Reach and Robotics.
Best buddies are about, buddies are friends who hang out with each other, with people with special needs. For example, making crafts, having fun and having karaoke.
I've also been in LEAP group, so I've worked with the grade nines and the great LEAP kids because they're also in our LEAP groups. And you were, I wouldn't be where I am without Bateman in my life. I believe Bateman should stay open because it's a, it's a community where you walk in. Doesn't mean it matters if you're in the center or in IB, you're melted with so many people and so many personalities, it's great for teamwork.
I don't want Bateman to close because I'm happy there.
And the school approach, the programs and everything is awesome. Even the structure and infrastructure, let me say, is great. So we are so happy to have it.
Another interesting fact to note is by closing down Bateman, you'll be separating me from my brother who will have to go to MMR for CPP programs. The best thing about Bateman is how, is all the programs and all the special events. Like, we did a thing at the beginning of the year, it was like a pie-in-the-face competition where the teachers all raised money for breast cancer and how we've done fashion shows for charities and stuff. And by taking this away, we're taking away a major community, like, give back to, from our community.
And it is. You, once you enter Bateman, it's never left your life. I still talk to teachers from this day, I talk to my past principal and it's, it has a piece in my heart and I will be deeply upset if Bateman closes. Bateman has changed, it has enforced my career path.
Please don't close Bateman. Please don't close Bateman.
And please don't close Robert Bateman.
So please don't close Bateman or you're gonna rip my heart out.
Thank you very much Cassie for your delegation. Is there any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing that, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out and your perspective and your video.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we are going to take a ten-minute break. I'm gonna put the timer on and I expect all trustees and staff to be back in their seats. All right, we're going to continue. Could I ask everyone please return to their seats? Where is the director? There he is. I'd like to invite our next delegate, Cameron McKay Up representing Robert Bateman High School. Cameron? Cameron McKay? Hello, welcome. When you're ready.
Okay, just to quickly introduce myself, my name's Karen McKay, I'm a grade twelve student at Bateman. And I'm just gonna talk about the diversity inclusivity at Bateman and how important that is. So the population of Bateman is comprised of a cohesive variety of cultures. This is unlike any other school. It is a mosaic of representation rather than a melting pot. The diversity at Bateman is not seen anywhere else. It allows many who otherwise may feel forced to conform to be themselves. This open-minded and judgment-free environment allows for expression rather than suppression. The inclusivity among students at RBHS creates a welcoming environment for anyone who walks through the doors, no matter what their interests are, difficulties they may face or social involvement. Bateman has a collection of extracurriculars and support resources that are incomparable to surrounding high schools. The students of Robert Bateman know their worth. The path of university to work is not the only viable option presented to us. As individuals, we've been provided with a plethora of opportunities to progress in our lives through the established facilities and programs. No matter what we find interest in or what we're ready for, there's guidance and support amongst the way. I've experienced this firsthand. I'm not only an IB student, but I am taking an uncommon route this upcoming year, a gap year. I was given nothing but understanding and support for my decision. The student-teacher connection at Robert Bateman goes far beyond copy and paste report card comments and online assignments that require little interaction. Just to show you this, I'm gonna read a report card comment that I received this semester by the best English teacher ever. This is all personalized by the way. Cameron has flourished this semester. I can tell she is truly enjoying the plays we're studying. I believe the themes of individuality and non-conformity speak to her. Cameron is that singular voice, distinct and original. She stands apart from the rest and you can tell she is passionate about remaining true to herself. These are not easy ideals for anyone to pursue, especially as a teenager when fitting in is what's expected. We have so much to learn from her. This is not copy and paste, you're not gonna see this also on my eight-year-old brother's report card, which has happened before. These opportunities to learn and grow are not movable. They've adapted to the environment they've been flourished in. They're not simple clubs, they're the manifestation of the passion and drive the students possess. I've personally had the opportunity to do this, I founded Bateman for Burlington where as Bateman contributes to the community during numerous fundraisers, we just did one for the Women's Shelter. Robert Bateman is arguably the most accommodating high school in Burlington. This is important as during the formative years, isolation is harmful to the confidence of the students. Being in an environment that is tailored to your needs allows normalcy to kids who may otherwise feel different. I have three younger siblings, all completely different individuals. As a protective older sibling I am and the passion I hold for the school, I would not want them to go anywhere else. The so-called geographic balance you propose does not compensate for the devastation you will inevitably cause. I'm thrilled with the support we have, my fellow delegates, the media and the Bateman community gathering in unity. I'm also glad to know there are important figures like trustee Lee Reynolds and Rochelle Poppen against the closure of any school. To avoid sounding repetitive, I'll leave it at this. Bateman was engineered to support diversity and to encourage differences. And it's not just politics or finances we're discussing, it's the potential for education. Bateman is unparalleled in its education programs because of its diversity acceptance and dedication. This concept of great education developed over the years is not easily movable. Now, for those of you looking to close a school and find a place where these concepts come together and build around it, stop looking and save your millions, because as long as we're in Burlington, this place already exists and it's called Robert Bateman High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Are there any comments or questions for the delegate tonight? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you for coming out and your delegation and your perspective. Appreciate it. Our next delegation is, uh, no, excuse me, please. Our next delegate is Denise Davy from Robert Bateman High School. Welcome, Denise. When you're ready.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I want to acknowledge the challenges that you face and ask that you keep an open mind and open heart when making this difficult decision. I attended Bateman when it was Elgin, my son went there, my daughter, who is delegating tonight, graduates in June, and my younger daughter goes into grade nine this September. She's a struggling student who falls between the cracks with no specific diagnosis, so it's been very challenging to find her the support she needs. I know what Bateman has to offer and I know how perfectly it will fit her needs because of the wide range of programs. She's looking forward to taking cooking, photography, swimming, and academic classes. But my family's history with the school is not the reason I'm here. I'm here because when I read the recommendations, I felt like I'd gone back to nineteen fifty. When special kids were those other kids and were treated as second best. Bateman is home to the highest number of vulnerable special education students in the city. It has forty-two EAs. And you all know how difficult it is to get an educational assistant. It has forty-two. Nelson has one. Some of the students actually require two full-time EAs each. Over the past twelve-and-a-half years, a teacher named Ingrid Hearn has worked very hard to create a wide-open environment in which no space in this school is off-limits for these kids. Cafeteria, gym, library, store, even the wrestling area is wide open. I implore you to take her up on her offer to tour the school because you really do have to see it yourself. You may be able to build a segregated wing, or you may not be able to because according to the Post article yesterday, there hasn't been an architectural survey. But you cannot start widening hallways, putting in ramps, widening doors in a school that's sixty-two years old, which means much of the school will be off-limits to those kids. You also cannot recreate the welcoming environment it took years and years and years at Bateman to create. To that end, why not close Nelson and move the kids over to Bateman where everything already exists? And I wanna make clear, I'm not advocating for any school closures, but financially, that makes no sense. Frankly, to even contemplate disrupting these vulnerable students shows an appalling lack of sensitivity. And it's the reason so many of us at Bateman were blindsided by this recommendation. The board can claim to offer the Cadillac of transition teams, but it will not help these kids because you're still disrupting them and you're still sending them back. This recommendation not only discriminates against these students, it contravenes the Ontario Human Rights Code, which states, "All children shall have equal access to an education." And the words of many teachers I've talked to, "It will not be safe, our kids will get bullied and our kids will get hurt." That, are, those are direct quotes from teachers I've talked to. All of this happened because the PAR's entire focus was on resolving problems that academic stream kids were having. So naturally, the recommendations reflect their needs, while spec ed students are supposed to be happy with a diminished version of the facilities they once enjoyed. That's called second best. Mr. Miller claims spec ed kids will benefit by having shorter travel times. Problem with that argument is the board neglected to ask the parents in CPP if they actually wanted to trade off this shorter travel times for the new school. So I went back and asked them, and I didn't find one person who did. More important, the travel time is one-point-nine kilometers, so we're talking about a two-minute shortage of, of travel time. So that is an irrelevant eh trade-off by, by any means. High schools in this city are a mess. We've got Hayden overflowing with portables, kids are stuck in the hallways, small number of schools are accessible to disabled students. However, Bateman has everything. It's the most accessible school in Burlington. It ranks among the best in candidate and skill trade facilities in high school, as you heard from John Norris. And it has the most comprehensive spec ed services in the region. Those aren't coming from me, we all know that those are the facts. This recommendation would split those programs in two, divide all the facilities and equipment for these programs in half, thereby downsizing and diminishing what the, what the students received. On top of that, the plan would immediately leave four-hundred-and-eleven students homeless because there aren't enough seats. So I'm not sure what kind of plan, and what eh planet that's a good plan. That's more than half Bateman's population, by the way, and I'd like to take this opportunity to correct something because the board's school, school profile shows Bateman with seven-hundred students at fifty-seven percent capacity. According to the school, there are seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine students, which works out to sixty-one percent capacity. It was that kind of flawed data combined with a flawed process that created this flawed recommendation.
You have thirty seconds.
And that's why we're here today, being forced to defend and fight for a school that has everything for all students. Trustees, these kids need your help and not your hindrance. They live in a world that brings them extraordinary challenges every day. And it falls to us to inject kindness and respect into their lives. This move would do the polar opposite. In fact, it would not be safe. I urge you to vote with your heads and hearts and say no to a plan that's not fiscally responsible, goes against the board's equity and inclusivity plan. Don't let your legacy be that you closed a school that had everything for all students. Don't be remembered for choosing reduced busing costs over the needs of spec ed kids. And don't forget that it's your job to be speaking for those students. One more sentence. Please vote no to closing Bateman and be the trustees who are remembered for your creativity and kindness in keeping a school open.
Are there any comments or questions for our delegate tonight? Uh, trustee Danielle, then trustee Collier.
Uh, thank you very much. You packed a lot of points into five minutes. Um, two in particular jumped, two phrases jumped out at me. You talked about um the fear that Bateman students would be bullied at Nelson. You also mentioned why not close Nelson and move them to Bateman. Should that happen, would you not be concerned that they would again be bullied? Uh, because it's the same kids, so I'm just trying to, to-
Yeah, no, it's a good point. I was throwing that out as a sort of, uh, the, the other side of it didn't make sense fiscally. Um, but I will take this opportunity to address that issue if you don't mind, because a lot of people have been saying toxic environment, Nelson and that sort of thing, which I think is not fair. Um, Nelson kids aren't meaner or more bullies in that school than anywhere else. Uh, it just has a totally different culture. Teenagers are teenagers, they tend to think in sort of black and white. You can't walk into a room and say, okay, everybody be nice, just stop it. It doesn't work that way. I've talked to the teachers at Bateman who were there when Brock merged with Elgin. And it took years for that culture to evolve. And the only thing that changes, it's time. It just takes time and, and that's how the kids start coming around. And in the end, everybody benefits because there's a lot more compassion and empathy on the side of uh able-bodied students as well.
Thank you for clarifying that for me, I appreciate it. Thank you, trustee Collier.
My question was asked.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for our delegate tonight? Seeing none, uh, thank you Denise, I appreciate your coming out, your delegation and your perspective. I'd like to invite Barbara Heller to come up to speak about the gifted program. Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you.
So when you're ready.
Good evening, trustees, director, and board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here on behalf of a large group of parents of students in the gifted elementary cohort who wish to maintain unity and a critical density to ensure continued placement vi- viability. The stakeholders first heard the proposal of dividing the gifted placement into a north and south site at the release of the director's final report. We feel this cohort is too small to be supported at two separate sites. The wish is to maintain a unified cohort. At the presently well-established Nelson site since the facilities are there. Is readable or should we turn the lights down a bit? Yeah, I'm just wondering, sorry. Um, these are the regional numbers of the elementary self-contained gifted. Oakville's elementary gifted cohort is three times the size of Burlington and feeds into three high schools. Milton gifted cohort is larger than Burlington and feeds into one high school. We do not feel it is in the best interest of Burlington's gifted students to be divided into a north and south site. These are the present sizes of the cohorts that would be divided. The largest cohort is in grade seven, who would be the first affected. And while some may choose not to continue in the gifted program, and while some may join into it going into high school, I would like to point out that the elementary numbers are not statistically different from the existing high school placement numbers. These are low numbers. Looking specifically at the largest cohort, the grade seven students, they represent the first group that started at grade one. This consists of thirty boys and seventeen girls. This close cohort would be divided with thirty-one going to the north and only sixteen to the south. Looking at the aims of the PAR review, director Miller reported larger cohorts are better as their sheer number means more variety and more flexibility in their timetables and more class offerings. As it stands, we've already addressed the issues with timetable conflicts. This being twenty-five percent in Burlington and ten percent in Oakville. This argument does support greater density of students in schools. We need the student density to fulfill the recommendations made to improve and enhance equity of opportunity for all Burlington secondary students. This includes the gifted. We understand the concept of composite schools. However, we do not feel that the gifted cohort in Burlington is of sufficient enrollment to support two sites. Other multi-grade placements have smaller class sizes. Two sites for small numbers is a resource drain requiring duplication of teachers and support staff while diluting the density of experience. Nelson is an established program. We've been down this route before. In two thousand and eight, secondary gifted cluster placement was offered in three Burlington high schools. There were concerns with respect to low enrollment numbers, gender balance, psychological needs, educational needs. This resulted in the reduction to one site for the secondary gifted program. Transportation is an issue that comes up. We actually, the dots actually represent a walking eh three-point-two-kilometer distance. And while busing is a complex issue, we are not covering a lot of area and we will still be looking at busing. And we feel that for this small cohort, maintenance of one school would significantly not impact on busing resources. A survey was offered to parents and responses were obtained in a short three-day window, given our timeline, um, which did represent one-third of the students. Ninety-one percent do not support the board's decision to split the gifted cohort. Ninety percent had concern, had concerns with the ability to offer adequate depth and breadth. Ninety-five had concerns with course selection availability. While only thirty-five percent of parents have female students and overwhelming nearly eighty percent were concerned about gender balance and the dilution of the small number of females even further. And significantly, ninety percent of parents are concerned about the social impact of the split. Our submission to the director and trustees, we would like to respectfully submit that at this time, the gifted cohort is a group small in numbers with their own unique identified special needs, identified on their IAPs in whom the large majority have been together for their elementary experience. We would like to remain as a unified cohort to maintain and promote program viability and relationships at Nelson, the school that already has the developed program in place.
You have thirty seconds.
In conclusion, the gifted cohort should remain as one to maintain program viability, provide flexibility of course choices, maintain strong resources, avoid duplication of resources given small current numbers, meet IEP eh recommendations. The parents do not support the division. Templates of other programs do not apply given significant enrollment number and program differences. And the parents were of good understanding and accepting of the transportation requirements of eight years traveling to the north, followed by four years traveling to the south. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any comments or questions from trustees? Uh, trustee Gray.
Yes, is this presentation being made available to the trustees? Has it been sent to us?
Uh, no, I, I have no problem sending it.
That would be great, thank you very much. I thank you very much for all the details provided tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much, Barbara, for your presentation and bringing the, your perspective to us tonight. I'd like to invite Natalie Hiltz to come speak to us regarding the gifted program. And if you could introduce whoever's with you, I appreciate it.
I have Evelyn Kwaipun with me. She's a current grade seven student who would be the first cohort to be affected by the division. Okay. Thank you for allowing you to, me to speak to you this evening. My name is Natalie Hiltz and I'm a parent to three girls in the gifted program currently in grades five, seven, and eight. I'm here tonight to speak to you on behalf of the parents of forty-three children in the gifted program in reaction to the recommendation to create two composite schools, which will see the gifted cohort split into a north school and a south school as of September twenty eighteen. According to the rationale presented on page ten of the director's final report, it's a disadvantaged cluster regional programs into one school site. While we don't disagree with the creation of two composite schools, we respectfully submit that the gifted cohort will not be better served by having a school in the north and the south providing gifted placement. And like other special education placements, our gifted kids are all coming from an existing elementary cohort. Additionally, their anticipated high school class sizes will be in the range of twenty-five kids, not six to ten, as I've been told in other special education classrooms. This decision has the potential to negatively impact student engagement, both intellectually and socially, and their well-being, which is contrary to the HDSP multi-year plan. It's part of the PAR process, it's been a goal to avoid the division of cohorts. In the current director's report, the importance of keeping cohorts together is highlighted by the fact that the director is recommending a boundary change to the to come see English, a boundary change so that the come-see English cohort can remain together. It's also mentioned that the Pineland English and French immersion cohorts will come together at Nelson as well. If it's important for them, why isn't it important for gifted kids to keep them together? These children have been together since grade one and have formed friendships not based on where they live. Speaking of friendships, many gifted children have trouble making friends due to overall quirkiness. I can tell you that my prayer every year was for my child to meet the one person who can get past the quirky personality traits and accept them for who they are. As parents, when they do find a friend, we do whatever we can to help them maintain these friendships, including driving our children to many different corners of this city. When it comes to going to high school, most of these kids wanna be with their friends. They're not phased by being on a bus, they've already spent several years of doing this. Admittedly, grade nine is difficult for most kids, but on top of this, you have gifted children with anxiety, issues, as well as transition difficulties. Now you add the stress of potentially being separated from your friends as you make this transition, the people who can support you the most as you move into grade nine. I can tell you that I've lived with the anxiety of a children going to grade nine this last year. And unfortunately, I've had to learn much about the mental health resources available in the community and in the school. And I'm not even dealing with the split issue. I'm telling you, I'm terrified of what this decision could do to kids already experiencing high levels of anxiety. As a parent of three girls in the gifted program, I also have concerns about the impact of smaller classes and gender balance. Girls are already underrepresented in this program, in the gifted stream, and splitting the cohort into two will further dilute these numbers. In the survey we did, that I conducted, I, we asked kids where they would go in the current grades five to eight, and the results are captured in this chart. The north-south split won't be fifty-fifty, it looks more like seventy-thirty with the largest class being in the north. Grade seven is the largest cohort currently in the program at forty-seven kids. And the current grade six cohort is only two-twenty-three students. At this time, three girls in grade six and five girls in grade seven would attend Nelson in grade nine. And this is assuming that they all stay in the program as many of these kids opt out to choose another pathway such as IB or going back to their home school. The director seems unconcerned about the small numbers, suggesting that-
The director seems unconcerned about the small numbers, suggesting that classes will be topped up with highly able students from the academic stream. This is a solution with its own set of problems that I can't discuss at this short time. Suffice it to say that I'm not sure how this would help with the goal of providing opportunities to work with peers of similar abilities and learning styles that is part of the board's special education plan and peers on all my children's IEPs. I have so much more I want to say, but I want to give you a chance to hear from one of the students who'll be affected by this most. Evelyn Kuaipun.
First off, I want to say thank you for letting me speak on behalf of... First off, I want to say thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the gifted students graduating the year 2018 and those that follow us. I've been with these students in the gifted program since its pilot year in grade one. Next year, I will be graduating with many of these same kids. It has been such a privilege to go to a school with these kids that think and learn like me. We're all so similar and so different at the same time. The bond that we've created is so strong and beautiful. The gifted program in Burlington is already so small. Splitting us up would only make the community smaller. Not only our student community, but also the quality of program that can be offered to us when the staff is divided as well. It takes a special sort of group, special sort of teacher to inspire our group. I am the voice of my friends. I am the voice of the fellow gifted students and even our families. I stand here fighting for our future, for the best possible education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions from trustees for our delegation tonight? Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I hope we can get a copy of your presentation as well as your notes. You said you had more you wanted to say and didn't have an opportunity to say it. So if we could all receive a copy of your notes as well as your presentation, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you both for coming out tonight and your delegation and sharing your perspective with us tonight. Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite Julie Hill, representing Robert Bateman High School, to come and speak to us. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you so much.
When you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to express my concerns. There are so many issues I could touch on, but I have chosen my main concern being the transitioning of our children with special needs and the effects these transitions would have on them. My son Evan is fourteen years old. He has behavioral issues, anxiety issues, many autistic tendencies, as well as Down Syndrome. Any transition process is a very big trigger, leading to Evan's very poor behavior at some times. I am a single mom. I chose a year and a half ago to make a big move. I sold my home in downtown Burlington behind City Hall. I made the decision to live in the Robert Bateman School community. After viewing many schools, I was very confident Bateman was the ultimate fit with every ability and option under one roof, covering multiple exceptionalities to the highest of academic scholars. Our school has many qualities the other high schools south of the highway do not have. We have an incredible year-round pool for all to use, auto paint shop, hair design class, state-of-the-art culinary kitchen, well-needed sensory room. We have daycare, additional washrooms to accommodate any and all abilities, an elevator, that's a biggie as well. Let's not forget also, we have all-new air conditioning and heating systems. That would certainly be a lot of money. Separate and safe bus pickup and drop-off available at our school. Outstanding geographic co-op opportunities within very short walking distance. We have had placements at Fertino's, Home Hardware, Pep Value, Dollarama, just to name a few. They can get their shopping list for their cooking class, out they go. Real quick access, educated shopping and pricing of items, et cetera. Being able to walk to these places cuts down on transportation costs as well as this in regards to a budget, if this is an issue. Independence, and, I'm sorry, independence is a major life skill. Evan, as well as many other Bateman students, will be attending high school for seven years, not your average four. This should be of great consideration. In these next seven years, I am looking forward to Evan exploring all the different travel, trade avenues at Bateman. Well worth the needed transition we made in my eyes, with hopes it was for a seven-secure, hopefully, years. Closing Bateman is not a needed transition when there are other schools unable to accommodate unless major dollars are spent. I can easily say Bateman is a one-stop-shop. There is no other school in south Burlington like it. Why are we going to try and duplicate elsewhere, one-point-nine kilometers away? It is here, it is Bateman. How much is revamping another school going to cost? Children with additional abilities and needs are usually managed and directed most of their lives by caregivers due to necessity. They are usually counting on us to lessen their burdens in life, as many just cannot be a voice for themselves. We need to make choices with respect to all abilities. Robert Bateman has all choices, Robert Bateman has all abilities. Evan has attended four elementary schools, all due to program changes or shutdowns, never due to leaving his area in which he lives. Evan so loves his new school, he is finally thriving after almost a full year being there. His behavior and anxiety has lessened. Evan is feeling secure and fitting in beautiful. Less transitions equal more security. Please do allow Evan and many others to learn in their own special way. Our community high schools are not just about highest scholastic achievements. Thriving to have the ultimate sport teams, that is not reality. Our community high schools should also not be about how long the school has been standing in an older area and whose grandmother attended. Community high schools should definitely be about catering to all needs, all styles of learning, be it trades, academics, or life skills. We need to get rid of...
You have thirty seconds.
We need to get rid of the "not-in-my-backyard" parental concerns, or the "not-going-to-shut-my-neighneighborhood-school-down" parental concerns. Let's all be practical. What offers the most? Robert Bateman offers the most. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any comments or questions from trustees? Trustee Collard.
We've heard a lot tonight about the difficulty that students in the CPP program have with transitions. Could you speak to that a little bit more?
Yes, I will speak in regards to my son, just as an example. Many kids with transitions, especially when they have special needs, have a very difficult time. Many of our children have had difficulties with health concerns and that in the past. My son started school late and missed kindergarten, pre-junior kindergarten as well as kindergarten, and started in grade one. Reason for this is he was diagnosed with ALL leukemia. He spent about a year and a half on and off in the hospital, and we lost some school time. This is probably where some of the anxiety comes from, but we try our hardest, I try my hardest, to give him stability and security. We uprooted to come to a area that could give a seven-year plan for my son without any more changes. He was in ICU three times, fighting for his life, and I just do my best to give him as much compassion and stability as I can, and that is why I sold my home and moved to this area now to find out that this is a possibility of a high-end school in south Burlington closing, and it is the only one that has all the accessibility, the pool, just everything. It's all there. Why would we even consider closing it down and readjusting another school when we've got it right there? What a waste. As I say, my biggest thing is, everybody says "not-in-my-backyard," but if you look at Bateman, it's not about "not-in-my-backyard," it's about the needs and abilities that need that school.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for our delegate? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you, Julie, very much for coming out tonight and bringing your perspective. I'd like to invite Heather DeHaan to come up to speak regarding Robert Bateman High School. Welcome, Heather. When you're ready.
Good evening. I am an active community member, an elementary school council chair, and a parent of children slated to attend Robert Bateman High School. I'm representing a group of parents who urge you to keep Bateman open. The ideas we're presenting tonight with more time and exploration are an extremely viable option for the board. These alternate solutions also honor two of the board's values outlined in the multi-year plan: creativity and collaboration. In his recent presentation to the trustees, Director Miller stated that Robert Bateman High School has it all. Absolutely. As we all know, millions were spent when Lord Elgin became Robert Bateman School, and since, further investments have been made to enhance Bateman, truly resulting in a truly unique facility. Bateman offers a wide variety of educational pathways, a large number of schisms and OYAP programs, and houses the Community Pathways Program. Nelson High School, a school which remains open in Mr. Miller's recommendation, has a great reputation as a strong academic and athletic school, and as you've heard, it's a tradition of pride and legacy in our community. Our recommendation is to capitalize on what these two unique schools offer and blend both to create a dual-campus solution. This is similar to what has been accomplished at White Ex High School in Oakville, with some additional programming options which would increase the viability of the solution. This new dual-campus school could potentially retain the name Nelson to capitalize on its reputation, and students could be offered the experience of attending the Nelson East Campus, or the Nelson West Campus, or flowing between them, depending on course selection. So, how does this dual-campus solution address the issues which triggered the PAR process in the first place? First, let's talk viability of programming. By 2018, there would be a total of almost fourteen-hundred students in English programming attending the new dual-campus school. Students would be able to select from a very broad range of courses and would experience little to no course conflict. Courses could be offered at either campus, giving students the ultimate in flexibility. This dual-campus would also allow for diverse programming, schisms, OYAPs such as culinary training, auto body welding, health and wellness, transportation, hospitality, tourism, and of course, the acclaimed IB program. At this new school, students would access the broadest range of programming at any school in Halton. Okay, let's talk utilization. As part of this transformation, we support a recommendation made earlier this week that the skills trades at Bateman be expanded, using the nationally acclaimed auto body program serving as the model. The creation of a center of innovation would draw many new students, resulting in increasing both enrollment and utilization. As well, given Nelson's reputation provincially in athletics, we are also recommending that the board explore the option of creating a high-performance program, like the one offered at WI-Dick in Milton. This HP program, which could be added at either campus location, would also drive enrollment and utilization by drawing students from across south Halton. Offering the magnet school concept in southeast Burlington makes far more sense. We also think it's worth exploring moving grade seven and eight students from feeder schools into our campuses. This provides an opportunity to address overcrowding experience currently at some southeast elementary schools. The other strong upside of this plan is that the CPP could remain in place. This provides equity of access to programs, prevents traumatic transitions, and allows all students to participate in the inclusive, unique, and diverse culture already in the East Campus. As well, it provides opportunity for expansions of successes like the Best Bredys program. As you can see, there are unexplored options that need to be evaluated. It's premature and fiscally irresponsible to toss away such an amazing facility with such incredible potential as Bateman High School. Why not save twelve million dollars or more and work towards creating a collaborative learning community in southeast Burlington? At the very least, this idea deserves time to be explored fully. At a time when school closures are affecting communities all over Ontario, we urge the HDSP to demonstrate that we can come up with creative and collaborative solutions that
You have thirty seconds.
not only save schools from closure, but to be a leader in providing enhanced programming for all our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Comments or questions from trustees? Trustee Gervens.
I have to say, thank you very much for bringing something new to us. I'm actually very excited about potentially exploring an idea like that. It's, you know, a Halton-y kind of solution, and we've seen examples already in our board where it's sort of working, so, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I as well really like the idea of partnering two schools together, especially with the short distance between the two schools. It's a very workable solution, and I look forward to exploring it further. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out tonight and bringing us your delegation and your presentation. Thank you, Heather. I'd like to invite Stephen Belik up, representing Robert Bateman High School. And if you could introduce the person that's with you, I'd appreciate that.
Thanks. This is Jennifer Belik. We thought she wouldn't be here tonight, so she could make it, so we valed to the delegation.
Welcome, and when you're ready.
I'm ready now, yeah. So, hello, my name is Stephen Belik, and this is my wife, Jennifer. Our personal info is on the cover page of the handout that's being passed around just now. Approximately fifteen years ago, I sat in this room to speak to a group of trustees in similar circumstances. Prior to 2004, I was a member of the Lord Elgin Parent Council. At that time, a number of Burlington high schools below the QEW were being considered for closure. The Lord Elgin and Brock High Schools councils met when it became very apparent that those were two of the schools that were being targeted for closure. We decided to look at our possibilities, what we could do, and someone came up with the option of a composite high school. So, we looked into that, the both councils, and it was agreed that we would propose a move of Brock High School to the newer and larger Lord Elgin facility to form a new academic vocational composite school. However, one of the issues that came up was whether the two schools could mesh and the populations work together, the student populations. The Brock group was concerned that their students would not fit in or be accepted at a super-competitive high school. I think that was one of the options then, at that time. After feedback from students from both schools, it was decided that it could work if the other school was Lord Elgin. So, a delegation presentation of the merger of these two schools to form the composite high school was made, it was received well, and later approved unanimously by the trustees. So what happened? We took a very, similar to what's happening now, we took a very tough situation, emotional, and by working together and coming up with another idea, another option, it was a win-win for everybody, for the schools, the students, and I know the trustees were happy too with it, so.
On page four, we detail features of Robert Bateman today. However, Bateman has become more than we have had ever anticipated. What has really impressed us today is how the special needs students have prospered and achieved success and integrated so well with students from all streams. You've heard this repeatedly from different delegates. It has far exceeded our original expectation. If you refer to pages six and seven, courses offered at Burlington high schools, Bateman has thirty-eight courses, unique to that school. The majority of them are academic. This is what comprises a composite high school. Why should we not close Robert Bateman? All facilities are in place to offer and expand on the composite high school concept, a high school that is only thirteen years old. Why spend ten to fifteen million dollars to try to duplicate such a young school? Bateman has the third-highest enrollment of any Burlington high school. Moving all of these students to three high schools would cause culture shock and makes absolutely no sense. The suggestion that a new wing for Bateman students be constructed at Nelson High The suggestion that a new wing for Bateman students be constructed at Nelson High School is not feasible. This new wing could isolate them. Do we risk losing the present integration for future segregation?
So, I see by the clock we're down about 50 seconds, so, we had planned to talk about other options. You've heard these options from different delegates, both Monday night and tonight. We agree with everything that's been suggested. In terms of a closing remark, I think, I'd like to speak to the trustees and say-
You have 30 seconds.
-this is your decision tonight. Recommendations have been made, but it's up to you to decide what to do. I think the most important thing really is, and I've just been totally surprised with the special needs students, and so much has been done at Bateman. We have to preserve that, and this is your responsibility. It's up to you to do that, no one else can. So, please, don't close Bateman, those students, and Burlington needs that school. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions from trustees tonight for our delegates? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you both, Stephen and Jennifer, for coming out, your delegation, and bringing your perspective to us. Thank you. I'd like to invite Brent Hall, a community member, to come and speak to us, please. Welcome, Brent.
Hi. Thanks.
Oops. Went too far. Okay. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll be speaking about the lack of information in the director's report with respect to the allocation of funds and the implementation of those recommendations. What you see before you is the actual dollars given to the HDSB for the 2015-2016 school year: $637 million. That money comes from 12 different grants within the ministry's funding formula. Only the special education grant of $84 million is untouchable, and money is able to be transferred among the grants to cover needs as necessary at a board's discretion, i.e. take some money from the Pupil Foundation Grant to give it to the School Foundation Grant. Another fact about funding is a third of the school board's funding is not even tied to enrollment, as stated by our Minister of Education in January. That is a total of $210 million. This is where the flexibility of the funding formula allows for school boards to be creative and show initiatives to actually better student success, or spend money on things such as infrastructure, meaning the $12.5 million for construction at Nelson could be used for things such as more extracurriculars, better technologies in classrooms, leadership conferences, et cetera. So, with that background, a glaring omission in the director's report is how each option within the PAR performs vis-a-vis money for student success. The funding that the HDSB will receive is the same amount of dollars no matter what option, or even if no option is chosen. But what isn't shown is how each option affects the flexibility built into the system, and thus how the dollars will be spent. What you are seeing is a graph depicting how much of every dollar goes to student success and how much goes to the operation and administration for each option in the Burlington PAR. I admit that these figures are made up, as I do not know the number, as they were not included in the final report. But more importantly, the public doesn't know these numbers. The PAR committee doesn't, and neither do you, the trustees. I'm unsure if the HDSB even knows these numbers, as I would have assumed they would have been a key component of the report if they did. It would be presumptuous. Yesterday, the director was quoted in the Hamilton Spectator as saying it would be presumptuous and also fiscally irresponsible to give the go-ahead on such plans. He was talking about paying for proper architectural and engineering reports to see if Nelson could actually accommodate the Bateman students. Is it ironic that the director feels it would be fiscally irresponsible to pay for a report that would cost in the thousands, but he would make recommendations for school closing that will cost millions with no fiscal data to support those recommendations? And now into the implementation of the recommendations. The Burlington PAR process was initiated because the above two criteria, and I have to agree, the running of an education system, there should be trigger points to initiate review of what we are doing and if we could be doing it better. But, for any of the recommendations to come out of such a review, criteria number two must change from "could enhance" to "will enhance." Otherwise, there's no point. For the director's recommendation to be considered a success and to actually enhance program delivery and learning opportunities, all the implications that come out of the recommendation must be executed flawlessly. To demonstrate this, I choose just four of the many implications that were in the report. I believe the director and the HDSB do have good intentions and would try to make sure everyone, the implications that came out of their recommendations, would be satisfied. But what does that mean? Well, let's give the HDSB an A for their ability to execute on the implications. Understand, I am giving them an 80% grade for each of these items even though there's nothing in the report detailing how they will make any of these things happen. My 80% grade is a leap of faith. And what does that mean? Well, here's the probability of success. Taking those four points, multiplying them together, we get 41% chance of success of the implementation of the recommendation. That's less than a 50/50 chance. Basically, a coin flip. There will be unintended consequences moving forward with this recommendation. That is a direct quote. And that 41% chance of success shows how true Director Miller's words were on April "We can't let our student success today or in the future be based on the flip of a coin. The recommendation of the director cannot be accepted as it does not fully examine the planning required, the risks associated within it, and the actual funding to support it. I respectfully ask for the trustees' vote no to the director's recommendation." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brent? Are there any comments or questions from trustees? Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I was wondering if we could get a copy of that.
Yes, absolutely. I will send it in with my notes.
Thank you.
They're attached to it. No problem.
Thank you. Any other trustee? Harvey Hope?
Thank you. I was wondering that in that backup, whether or not you would have references to where you came up with your numbers? It's the same question I ask the staff every time they bring us anything, so I'm-
I will reference, well, remember the one set of numbers I made up?
Yeah, the chart, right, is made up. But the other numbers-
The dollar figures?
Yeah.
Absolutely, they were actually from the Ministry of the Education.
Okay, and I guess my comment is, a good chunk of the Pupil Foundation Grant is for salaries, so it's not as movable as I think you think it is.
No, I understand that. I was just explaining how there is flexibility within the grants.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Brent, for your delegation and your perspective and coming out tonight. I'd like to invite Tracy Bruton from Robert Bateman High School to come up, please. Tracy, if you have some people with you, could you introduce some, please?
Yes, I will. Pushing. Sorry. Hi, I'd like to introduce my husband Steve, and my daughter Megan, and our service dog Frieja. Oh, sorry. I'd like to introduce my husband Steve, my daughter Megan, and our service dog Frieja.
Good evening, board and staff members. Thanks for allowing us the opportunity to speak on behalf of Robert Bateman and the special needs parents at that school. You have a challenging decision to make, many challenging decisions to make, and I wouldn't want to trade places with you. Although perhaps that wouldn't be a bad idea for you to see our point of view, it would be interesting to have board members spend some time in our shoes to truly understand the challenges we face day in, day out, especially around transitions. Going on a simply family outing requires us to phone ahead, ask about crowded facilities, noise, queues, those kind of things. The decisions can be overwhelming on a daily basis. We often have to go to the same place many times before we get comfortable enough for Maggie to make it a regular hangout. We faced these same challenges when we started at Bateman. There were many visits to the school to ease her fears. Many of these visits were done with her mother, as the elementary school plan didn't really meet her needs. We experienced this transition with only one child and remember the challenges we faced. We worry that when moving kids en masse, they won't get the same quality of a plan that they really deserve and that they are really legally entitled to. To help others understand how badly a transition, even a well-thought-out transition, can affect children on the spectrum, going to pass the microphone to Megan, she's going to say a few words.
I would like to speak to you today about my personal difficulties with transitions. I have high-functioning autism, and I'm in the academic stream. My disability is mostly invisible, and not everyone can understand my struggles, and I know many others struggle with the same problems. When recalling moments of transition, my mom, my mind can only retreat into panic. Nobody likes change, but in my instance, change can put me back a whole day, and transitions are pretty major, that can put me back for weeks or months. Examples of change in my everyday life can include the moving of desks, an unexpected substitute teacher assembly, and other changes in routine. These often result in me becoming upset. This is an exhausting process, and instead of dealing with what the rest of the day has to offer, I'd rather go home. This causes me to miss schoolwork and social interactions. In these difficult situations, a teacher's arsenal of tools aren't necessarily helpful if the teacher is somewhat unfamiliar. The teachers who support me now are teachers I have had for two years now, and it took almost that long to feel as comfortable as I am now. I am one person representing a whole population of children who feel the same way, if not more extreme. This is not just something you can put simply because of how complex the issue really is. But the reality is, transition to a new school is seen by many as a disaster that would take years to repair and the progress they have made. When the dust cleared after the initial transition to Bateman, I thought to myself, what a perfect school for me. I felt like I belonged, and I would hate to see that disappear. It's everything to me and many other students.
I first must acknowledge that two years ago, my daughter probably wouldn't be able to sit here and talk to you like this, and I accredit that to being at Bateman and all the success she's had there. I still remember the first day that we visited and we came in, the first day, and the staff allowed me to come in with her, and nobody asked any questions. The students just kind of looked at her and said, hey, I like your dog, right? The fact that I was there wasn't really noticed. I continue to support her in this way when needed and always feel welcome. No one questions why Megan might need a certain accommodation and step right in to help her meet her needs. I often observe students holding the door for her and Frieja and helping her to settle into a new classroom. I truly feel this is due to the integration of children of all diversities throughout the whole school and the modeling of the staff. Having worked as an early childhood educator in many different centers, I know that this kind of environment is very unique and takes the right combination of staff and years to develop. We realize there are no easy solutions to the problems the board faces. We're certainly not suggesting those solutions tonight personally, but we feel many others have brought forward some really good solutions. We need the board to realize how the changes they are proposing will negatively affect the lives of these special kids.
You have 30 seconds.
Do not close Robert Bateman School and forever take away the unique environment that has evolved there over many years. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your delegation. Are there any comments from trustees or questions? Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I was wondering, do you take Frieja to school with you every day?
Yes, every day.
Lucky you.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I would like to thank you all, Tracy, Steve, Megan, and Frieja, for coming out today and sharing your delegation and your perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite Lauren Olson from Burlington Central High School to come up. This is the next delegation. And Lauren, you need to introduce the rest of the people here.
Of course. Along with me, I have Drake McGilvery, Daniel Weg, Finn Linder, and Ella Walsh.
Welcome. So, when you're ready.
Good evening to the trustees. We are the student representatives of the Burlington Central 2386 Trojan Robotics Team.
Hello, my name is Finn. I'm a grade nine student from the Burlington Central Robotics Team. I joined this team because I thought it would be a fun and intriguing experience, and it was. When I first joined, I was extremely nervous about the program. I couldn't name any of the machines in the shop. By the end of the program, I could confidently operate the mass majority of those machines. It did require a lot of dedication, responsibility, late nights, and long hours, but if you asked anybody on the team, they would tell you that without a doubt, it was worth it. I have a lot to thank for the mentors. They helped me out in a big way, and they helped out all the grade nines. They were inspiring, and they helped so much. I will say that without a doubt, I will join the robotics team next year because it was fun, inspiring, and it taught me so much.
Hello, my name is Ella Walsh. I'm a grade 10 student at Burlington Central High School. This year was my second year on the team, and I was leading a group of programmers that programmed autonomous robot for the robots. So, for those of you that don't know, autonomous is 15 seconds at the beginning of every match you played, the robot would have to drive on its own with pre-programmed code that I wrote along with my group of programmers. We work with the program LabVIEW, and using the language is a great learning experience for all the programmers, and we wouldn't have, wouldn't have had this without Burlington Central Robotics. The team had a record number of girls this year, with about a quarter of the team being girls, which is great because there's no discrimination against the girls. They work in all aspects of the shop, from the shop to programming to all the other aspects, and there's no discrimination. So, whether you're a girl or a boy, it doesn't matter, as long as you work hard. That's part of why I joined the team, because it's just so inclusive, and another part is from VEX Robotics. So, in grade seven and eight, I was part of Halton VEX, which is, it's mini robotics for the little kids, and it gets them inspired in engineering and robotics. Halton VEX is actually started by Burlington Central mentors about seven or eight years ago, and there's now 40 schools involved in it across Halton. The atmosphere and the people, that's why I joined the team.
Hi, I'm Lauren. As you know, I'm in grade 11, and I am the captain of the Central Robotics Team this year. Our facility for robotics includes machines such as a lathe, drill press, plasma cutter, CNC, you name it. And we have many other machines that you'll be using in the workplace of this field. We have the ability to really apply the knowledge that we get to learn and apply hands-on learning that would be experienced in the workplace. Students have a wide variety of team options for robotics, including electrical, functional mechanisms, programming, and more. They really learn real-world skills, like problem-solving on a deadline and working with what you've got. They have the opportunity to gain experience that normally wouldn't be available.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Daniel Weg. This is my fourth year on the robotics team, my senior year of high school. What I'm going to be talking about is the involvement that our mentors, our teachers at our school have within the whole robotics program, along with our lead mentor, who's a teacher at our school, Mr. Arnold. We also have a largely dedicated group of people who help guide us in our whole design process, programming, et cetera. We have many students who come back after they've graduated to help and engage us in being able to really just create the best product that we can, including this year, winning a competition and going on to the world championships. I know myself and my brother, who's a mentor and also a recent graduate, combined, we have 14 years of experience within the robotic setting. Right now, we have Drake McGilvery here, who at the Halton Skills Competition came in second for CAM. We're just gonna showcase this robot for you. I'll be talking about it as we do it. So, right now, as we're driving around, the object of the game this year was to-
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Was to shoot balls out of our shooter into a high boiler, and along with that, we would drive around. There's gears to be placed, right bumper? And along with that, as you can see here, that's good, the game was to score as many points as you could in that time. At McMaster, we were able to win that competition, which was incredible, and this is just, instead of a PowerPoint presentation, this was kind of- And this is just, instead of a PowerPoint presentation, this was kind of the visual aid that we brought today.
We'd like to thank you very much for your demonstration and your delegation. Is there any comments or questions for trustees tonight? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing your robot. That was exciting to see. There was a number of mentions of mentors in your presentation, and I heard the word used, teachers and others. So could you perhaps just share with us the other people that engage in our schools that are not teachers?
A big part of, we, for our team, on, we, in the six-week build season that we have, we meet on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. And one of our team's largest supporters are the parents of the students on the team. So on every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, we have one or two students' families and they're generous enough to cook us a meal because unfortunately, we don't work on an empty stomach. And it's a great, the support that they have in order to help us succeed and get to especially like what we were able to accomplish this year.
Are there any other comments or questions? Trustee Harvey Ho. Yeah, thank you. Just curious, how men, how many students do you think are involved in the robotics area? Sort of as a percentage of the school?
As a percentage of the school, I'm not too sure. I know that on our team, we have approximately 44 students along with 15 mentors, who would be teachers and other people who might be alumni from the school, who have come from, they're working right now, but then they come afterwards to come and help us out and guide us in what we're doing and help us figure out kind of what the basics of robotics is. So as a president of our school, I'm not quite sure, but that would be the amount.
It's also the largest club in our school.
Yes.
Throughout all sports, we do have a large.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank you for coming out, your delegation and your perspective, and congratulations on your success this year.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we will now invite Steve Armstrong to come up, representing Lester B. Pearson and Frank Hayden. Welcome, Steve.
Thank you. Well, I gotta tell you, as an engineer, I'm almost willing to give up my slot if I can play with the robot.
Gord, will you turn off the other mic there, please?
Well, thank you for the opportunity for certain. The, I, my name's Steve Armstrong and I did have the pleasure of serving on the PAR Committee, as some of you may recognize. It should be Armstrong's delegation. The, it was a very enlightening process and many of us, I think, are very committed to seeing ways that we can help improve that in the future because there were, there were certainly some conflicts and opportunities there. But there's a few things I wanted to talk on, and as an engineer, Scott, could I get the lights down just a little bit? I like graphing data. So the first graph I have up there was the very first one, which was the projections of the enrollment citywide. So summing them all up, so the heavy red line represents the actual numbers and you can see that we bottomed out around 2014 and have since been rising. And the other lines all represent individual projection data sets from the various LTAPs going back to 2006, all the way up to the most recent one. And what I'd like to draw your attention to is if we look at the year 2020, which is very quickly approaching us, we can see that there's been a very rapid change in the projected enrollments citywide. In fact, if we take a look at that, that rapid change would be normally concerning on itself, but citywide, we will be at 80% utilization overall by 2020. And arguably, if we'd had that sort of balance across all the schools, we probably wouldn't be having some of these discussions here, but it's not the situation. Just to show that this is not unique to Burlington, the challenge of projections, I know from my corporate life is not very easy. It turns out that the city of Oakville similarly has issues where the long-term numbers tend to deviate quite a bit from what the actuals are. And in the case of both Oakville and Burlington, we're seeing movements that trend towards 700 students at a time in fairly big blocks on a regular basis. So the challenge of creating projections is not easy. And certainly in the recent history, everything that we've seen when there's errors, it's been that the enrollment has exceeded our expectations. So where would we take all that? And to me, the real question is it comes down to, you know, what's our confidence in these projections and the fact that they've, they're weighing heavily on the stated recommendations to close schools? And given the numbers over the next five years, it seems like to me that it's quite unwarranted to actually be looking at closing schools. What was concerning to me from the recommendations was more so the issue of selling off valuable real estate assets and turning that into cash for the short-term gain and long-term problems. I think for the community, for the taxpayers, et cetera. So that's the general concern that I have. But I don't want to say the status quo is acceptable. It's not. We have schools that are way over utilization, in particular Hayden. We also have situations like Pearson where I'm at, where although as a percentage of utilization, we're not that low, our student body is only 392. So at some level, we need to stop talking about utilization as the goal, I think, and encourage more discussion about healthy enrollments across the board because it really is enrollments that drive the opportunities. To that effect, I mentioned Hayden. If, if we were to do absolutely nothing, what the projections call out is that Hayden is going to grow by 600, over 600 students by the year 2021. It's maxed out in terms of capacity. Clearly, that's an issue. That's been recognized through this process in both incarnations of the recommendations. It was going to rely on the movement of the French immersion. And I'm concerned about that because parents have expressed doubts about that. And to draw a little bit of data to this, I want to talk about the word monitoring, which showed up a couple times in the recommendations. And I'm going to say, I don't think monitoring is enough because what this projection set here is showing is what was expected to happen with Pearson's enrollment. When we opened up Hayden, the boundaries were changed. Some of the students were intentionally taken away from Pearson. We were actually going to deliberately make that school one of sub-600. But not many years later, we find that the actual data were 30% off of that target.
You have 30 seconds.
That school is dropping below critical mass. And so going forward, the real challenge is that we've got close proximity here in terms of the big overlap on the walking space between Hayden and Pearson. People have talked about what needs to go on. Well, the real reality is when you tour Hayden, what you find out is it's not just the shiny building. It's also about the vibe that gets created. We've heard some discussions about possibly conjoining schools and I'd like to suggest that we possibly look at using the proximity of Hayden and Pearson to explore those sort of things. And there are some ideas in the handout that I've suggested here on how we can actually tackle this, but with respect, I'll hold off. I will make the presentation available along with the notes.
Thank you. We do have some comments and questions from trustee, trustee Pappen.
Thank you. Thank you for making your presentation available to us. And I also want to thank you for all your time you put into the PAR, you and Cheryl Deluque. Based on what you learned as a PAR representative, what do you think are the biggest risks around closing Pearson? And what would be the risks to keeping it open?
I, to me, the biggest risk about closing, well, it's multitude. One, the current utilization rate above the QEW is sitting at 83%. And without closing any schools, it's going to start flirting with 90% by 2020. So very close to the board's stated goals. Closing Pearson will push that number up to 111%. If there was value in having 90% utilization, I don't know why we're trying to overshoot that or allow that. I see that as one of the negatives. The bigger risk is probably the fact that Pearson is a smaller school by design and to take that out of that community, to take that out of the north, I think, is a challenge because despite its size, 25% of the students that are enrolled at Pearson come from, are there as optional attendants. So there is an appeal definitely for the smaller schools in some cases. And likewise, Bateman's sitting at 27%. Those two schools have got very good optional attendance, I'd say. So there is something to be said for that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So how would future developments affect the utilization figures that you've provided the trustees with?
As Dawn knows, in going through this, in the, in the real chart, there's a lot of areas of Burlington that have been identified by the city as growth areas, such as North Aldershot, which as far as I understand, are not considered in the near-term plans because methodology-wise, the board won't take those in until they see basically the city stepping up and confirming that. But there are pockets of that in Burlington area proper. There's certainly the risk of the higher-density stuff. I know it doesn't generate, typically generate a lot of students, but we would not have anticipated that multiple families under one roof would also be stressing some of the northern parts too, so.
Thank you. Trustee Collier.
Thank you. I understand that the focus of your delegation is Pearson, but I'm also wondering what your solution would do to benefit MM Robinson? And as you know, in the director's recommendation, the solution doesn't do much for Central and does even less for Aldershot. How would you address that? And would we be able to get graphs for each of the schools? I know you did a graph, just, I would love to have a graph.
I will do that.
I like graphs.
It was designed to save me 1,000 words, which I thought was going to save me a couple minutes. It didn't work out that way exactly. I think what, what we saw in the PAR process as a committee member, by the end, I thought we were really starting to talk about innovation. And since the closure of that, I think we've heard tonight on multiple occasions where the community members are doing that outside of the formal PAR process. So I think we really need to engage on that. And one of my colleagues, Rory, on Nissen on Monday, he outlined some possibilities related to boundaries to help up, load up MM. The area I was looking at is conjoining it and can we, how do we transfer that vibe that exists in Hayden? Because when you go into Hayden, it's, it's not just the new building. It feels cool. Like, I mean, the kids are engaged. They like that. And up until the class changes, in which case then it starts feeling like the running of the bulls because it's a stampede to get, to get through there. So how do we get that "I want it" type school approach into the other schools? As a, as a goal of trying to reduce the, the pushback that we see from parents and students. It's sort of like, I don't want to go there because this, this school is much better. But how do we lower that resistance to change? I think that's the real opportunity.
Trustee Harvey Ho.
Thank you.
That's okay. My, it's a quick question you can send me later. I'm just curious where that 2009 information came from because it's an outlier. So perhaps you could, when you send us the stuff, if you could actually be very specific on where you got your data.
Absolutely. Absolutely. All that data came to us from a report containing all the previous LTAPs. It's the board's data, basically. I know it jumped out at me too. But I will explain it more and I'd love to get to it because it does. The years before showed a different trend. '09 popped up and then the years after that went down. So I, I don't know if it's as simple as just a copy paste.
Thank you, Steve. We appreciate your delegation. And bringing your perspective to us. Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite Douglas Emerson, representing Lester B. Pearson High School. Welcome, Douglas.
Thank you very much.
And is someone here with you? Oh, you forgot your phone. That's kind of important.
That's okay.
When you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Director Miller, trustees, members of the board, and especially members of the public who are here in attendance in person or following online. I thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm here to speak about the director's recommendation number three with regard to closing Lester B. Pearson. My name is Douglas Emerson. I'm the proud parent of a grade-two student in Halton and a member of the parent council at Pearson's one and only feeder school, Searns McMillan. We've had many delegations this evening and earlier this week that spoke to the reasons why Pearson and Bateman as well should remain open. To that list, I could add countless reasons of my own, but given the limited time, I'll focus instead on, on the reasons that are being put forward for why Pearson should close. I think it's really important for us to be clear and transparent about the rationale behind the closure recommendation because frankly, and as Steve eloquently and graphically described, the rationale does not appear to stand up. The recommendation to close Pearson, I have to say, comes as a little surprise based on the last few years of activity. We've seen the board systematically over a period of a number of years now, withdrawing funding, programming, and feeder schools from Pearson in favor of Hayden, saying that the school now needs to be closed because enrollment is low. Seems like a self-fulfilling statement. Yet this campaign to position the school for closure was not communicated as such to the community. I don't, I'm not aware of it ever having been voted on by the trustees. So the direction to, to put the school on this course is concerning. And to what end was the goal? In the absence of communication or transparent communication about this strategy, we're left to assume that the board hoped that by opening Hayden, they would address capacity issues in north of the QEW sufficiently that they could close the smaller Pearson and presumably in the process, save some money. Let's leave aside for a moment the fact that the plan has been proceeding for some time without public discussion. Leave aside that the supposedly outdated facility is the second youngest secondary school in Burlington. At face value, the recommendation, if it makes economic sense, that would be, that would be worth considering. After all, the board's cost per student at a smaller school is higher than certainly at a smaller enrollment school like Pearson, which was smaller by design versus when a large, larger so-called super schools where enrollment is north of 1,000 students. The overhead for maintenance, for services, and especially staff and faculty at Pearson are costs I'm sure the board would like to get clear of, as well as the one-time windfall of selling the property. But those are short-term gains that need to be balanced against long-term consequences. If we accept that adequate capacity would exist to house the students in North Burlington following the closure and if we accept that appropriate learning circumstances for the diverse needs of our community's young people could be maintained post-closure, then maybe you've got a case. But that reasoning only makes sense if, as Steve was illustrating for you, we accept the numbers in the report. However, the numbers changed with every single meeting of the PAR, the projected population numbers. That degree of variability does not lend a lot of confidence to the proposals that we're seeing before us right now. Even if we do accept the latest set of numbers, which do not appear to have been validated by either municipal or provincial authorities, the decision only makes sense if we accept the most optimistic interpretation of those numbers. And I think Steve illustrated why there's reason to doubt that that projection will, will play out. I'm going to go off script for a moment just to say that one of the reasons we're seeing shifts and one of the season reasons that we're seeing surprises in enrollment, and Steve touched on it briefly, I want to go into it in a little more detail, is that settlement patterns are changing, particularly in newer communities like we have in North Burlington, like I lived through 15 and 20 years ago in Mississauga, like North Oakville is experiencing now. Because of, I think the two main drivers are a shift in the cultures represented in our newer residents who have a different, a different cultural approach to family living and in particularly, the high and ever-increasing cost of these properties. We're not seeing single-family homes housing single families. So the population, the student, potential student population for these communities,
Thank you.
is higher than the projections would indicate. One, only need look at Hayden and the overcapacity there to see what the risks are. You've toured it, hopefully all, most of you attended that tour. You've seen firsthand what overcrowding looks like. There is a great vibe there, but at considerable risk and challenge, overcrowding does not lead to optimal educational opportunities and the plan as proposed would lead to as many as three schools being overcrowded. I'd like to know what the board's contingency plan is if this plan goes ahead to allow for additional capacity in the future if the board's very optimistic projections don't pan out.
Thank you, Douglas.
Thank you.
Thank you for your delegation. Comments and questions for trustees, trustee Pappen?
Thank you, and also I wanted to ask if you would pass on your written words about your presentation? Okay, as we heard earlier, Pearson was built as a feeder school for MM Robinson. I just wondered if you see this as an option, being a feeder school for Hayden?
A relief school. A relief school?
A feeder school. Relief school, sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Certainly, and I think that's been explored and proposed in a few of the delegations that we've seen so far and in some of the proposed boundary redistributions that have been put forward by the community. Their, their capacity requirements north of the QEW. Their capacity requirements north of the QEW are going to be significantly higher than the projections that this plan is based on. I find it astonishing that the plan has moved forward as far as it has based on these numbers. There's nowhere else north of the QEW to build. So if the board sells this property, closes the school, there's no other property that the board, even assuming the tax dollars remain available, there's no other property that the board could then acquire to build a new school to provide additional capacity north of the QEW, between the QW and the 407. So the selling of Pearson is also the selling of any contingency the board has to accommodate additional capacity based on the numbers that Steve just showed us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out tonight, Douglas, and giving us your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And your perspective. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to invite Renee Serbou up to talk about the International Back Laureate Program. And Renee, you're going to have to introduce the other people with you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Davey. This is my friend Renee Serbou. This is Michael Penny-Carrasco and Sean Barbara. We're here to talk to you today about the future of the International Back Laureate Program.
Emma and I are both Grade 12 IB diploma students at Robert Bateman and will be graduating next month. IB is a challenging and rigorous academic program that encourages students to push themselves and become well-rounded individuals who strive to make the world a better place. We have been a part of IB since grade nine, so we have a full appreciation of what the program has to offer and the opportunities and insights that it affords students.
As a testimony to the program's strengths, both Renee and I have been accepted into all five universities of our choices with scholarships from every one. We firmly believe that we owe our success to the IB program and to its educators. If that's not enough, of the top three GPAs in the Halton district, all of them were from Robert Bateman, but the top two were IB students.
That's why we're concerned about the board's recommendation to close Bateman and, to quote Director Miller, "simply move IB to Central." As a student formally in the gifted program at Charles Bowdoin, the decision to come to Bateman for IB was huge for me. In all likelihood, I would have easily chosen to go to Nelson for gifted with all of my friends had our former IB coordinator, Alexander Skeen, not walked me through the school and introduced me to the unique environment, which I would soon be proud to call my home.
In accordance to IB America's conditions for the approval of relocation, in Section 6, it says, "If less than two-thirds of teachers moves, IB Americas will assess whether or not a new reauthorization process has to begin." Just so you know, this reauthorization process could take two to three years. Also, IB requires two-thirds of the student population to move with it.
Not only did Director Miller neglect to include the complexity of this process in his report, but it was also just suggested that pre-IB would be reinstated by September 2018 and that the full IB program would be in place for the following year. Students that are currently in grade nine pre-IB would be entering the first year of the IB program in 2018. Anyone not in IB for the grade 11 year would ultimately be unable to complete the program and earn their diploma.
The parents of future IB students are concerned about the stability of this program. And can you blame them? How can you look anyone in the face and suggest that they put their children into a four-year-long program that might not even exist when they get there? There is no guarantee that with this disruption and loss of faith in the program will not result in less than two-thirds of the student population deciding to relocate.
The deadlines are too tight to make this transition work. It is clear to us now that this is a "close now and worry later" kind of situation. What a dangerous game to play when the education of literally hundreds of students lies in your hands.
Another factor that we must address is IB teacher staffing. As we mentioned, IB requires two-thirds of existing IB teachers to transfer to the new program. However, this will conflict with union seniority policies.
Teachers have been told that the currently trained IB staff at Bateman are not guaranteed a position at Central. The board has spent thousands of dollars on training for these teachers. The dollar value to retain 14 to 20 teachers plus an administrator could be as high as $100,000.
There is also the very important issue of how IB students with physical but disabilities could be accommodated at Central when it is not fully accessible. It requires more than $3 million worth of upgrades, and that will not be done by 2018 when Director Miller wants to move the pre-IBs.
So if you choose to ignore the fact that this move is illogical from a financial standpoint and an efficiency standpoint and a geographical standpoint, then maybe you will be concerned about the well-being of the students.
We're not football players. We're not the cool kids. We're first-generation immigrant students. We're nerdy overachievers. We're different, but we have big dreams.
Bateman is the only place for IB. Our community is welcoming of students from all walks of life, and nobody is ever made to feel different or out of place. The diverse community at Bateman is the only one of its kind in Burlington that provides students with the ability to learn from each other and celebrate the achievements of each and every student, regardless of what that achievement is.
How could Robert Bateman be on the list for possible closure when it fills such an important gap in the school system? We have everything here. Why dismantle, separate, and reconstruct something that is fully operational here and now?
So what other option is there when we are bound by IB America's strict reauthorization process, conflicts with seniority and restaffing, the cost to reauthorize and retrain, the disruption to students already in the program and those that want to enter, the lack of busing, the accessibility for disabled persons, and the school environment?
It's frankly irresponsible and disrespectful to hundreds of people in this program to offer no other solace than, "We'll move it, and we can offer the same program over there, and don't worry."
Nobody can guarantee that it will ever be the same program or that the students and the teachers will not suffer.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for your presentation. Are there any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming out today and sharing your delegation and your perspective. I'd like to invite Kathy Bergland up, representing Aldershot High School.
Hi. I didn't bring a map of Aldershot, but I think you're covered now, right? It's a month today, so. Okay. Did I bring what? A robot. I don't have a robot either. I'm so sorry. We're all getting punchy.
When you're ready.
Okay. My name is Kathy Bergland. As an Aldershot parent, I was asked to speak to you tonight about our community ahead of the deliberations for this vote. Aldershot is a community that's geographically segregated from the rest of Burlington and Halton region. The high school is located in the center of our community and services both students and a wide variety of area residents. We're a long distance from other schools in the region and have a hybrid population of both rural and suburban residents. From the farthest borders of our catchment area, students are 13 kilometers to the next closest high school. From the closest border, all of our students are still beyond the 3.2-kilometer walkability requirements that are set by the board. So, and there's currently no city transportation option to another school that would not require students to actually change buses on the city bus routes. With the exception of a small ice rink facility, our school serves as the only community center within this large catchment area. Our pool, our auditorium, our cafeteria space, our gyms, our sports field space are all utilized by community members across Aldershot. Groups within our community population generate in excess of $100,000 annually in rentals at our school, and this external revenue stream is the highest out of Burlington schools. So we have experience in developing community partnerships, both large and small. It includes great initiatives, such as the Eco Studies Program with the RBG. We have a CanFit Pro Training Certification Program offered in combination with a local business, and we also have a youth kitchens program supported by a local church. We have a vibrant and award-winning breakfast program run by volunteers and students and supported by area businesses. Aldershot school staff are active in the coordination of a citywide high school curling program based in Aldershot. We succeed every day in offering collaborative activities between our high school, elementary feeders, area businesses, and community groups. In short, we're a school that is integrated deeply within our community and confident in our ability to establish outstanding multi-stakeholder relationships. While we're a small school, we have a very high level of extracurricular participation in sport, social development, science, and in the arts. Just this year, we've had three teams in three different areas of sport be awarded at OFSA. We also have our junior and senior bands participating in the National Music Fest Canada in Niagara Falls next week. Our students are not lacking for things to do at our school. But we also have a serious problem. Due to course conflicts, program shortfalls, some of our students are leaving our school, and they're also leaving our board. It's not really a demographic issue, as is commonly held out, and which Steve attested to earlier. There are policy issues in place. There are barriers, and they restrict their success, and I'd be happy to speak to those. There are also opportunities, however, available to make changes that would assist in halting this trend. Several of the ideas that have come out in this PAR process, we look forward to exploring, and we want to see how they can be implemented. We support the director's report to develop Aldershot as a magnet school, because it doesn't give us a simple fix out of our course conflict issue, but it does give us the gift of time to fully develop a creative and ambitious solution, and we get a chance to run with it. It's been clearly portrayed by all the delegations here that every school in Burlington has a strong sense of community. And all of these schools are coming up with really creative and innovative ideas on how to best respond to the demands that their schools need, and it's a pretty exciting process. This PAR process has been tough for a lot of people, but there's also been a tremendous amount of innovation and ideas coming out of it. My concern now is if you close off this process by putting through this report and voting for it in three weeks' time, that we're going to shut down all of the creative juices and innovations going on, because this dialogue is going on all across the city. And there is a precedent that has been set. And just even in recent weeks, there have been three different school boards that have postponed the idea of closing their schools so they can further explore creative ideas on how to grow their schools. I don't think that we have a problem with demographic growth in this city. I think we have a problem with innovative ideas. And we have dozens and dozens of people who have come out and put hundreds of hours into doing presentations. They will help you. They will give you the support that you need and the ideas that you need. So strike a multi-stakeholder committee, let the process continue, and actually get the right solution out of it, because right now we have a maybe-not-so-bad solution or maybe a really bad solution. And I think ideally, we'd all rather generate our energies to getting an excellent solution. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, questions or comments for our delegate? Trustee Collier.
You're right. We would like an excellent solution. We would. You spoke about three different school boards who had turned down PAR recommendations. Could you let me know which school boards they are?
Yes, I can. Hang on a second. It was the only note that I brought. So, Trillium Lakeland, Prince Edward Hastings, just, I think, this in the last couple of days, and Bluewater have all agreed to postpone school closure decisions ranging from one year up to five years to allow their communities to continue to explore better ideas.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Trustee Harvey Hope and Trustee Reynolds.
The other question that you left hanging was something about policy conflicts and so forth.
Yeah. So I'll give you just two brief points that have been raised to me by parents just in the last week. We know that in Aldershot, what used to happen is kids who went to Holy Rosary School, which is the Catholic Board, because of the proximity of Aldershot and because of the nature of the busing, they used to come to Aldershot in grade nine. They'd go to Holy Rosary, and then a lot of those kids would actually opt out of the Catholic system and come into the public system. What happens now is they're going the other way. And when I talked to one of the parents about the decision, because for every other reason it would make sense for her to go to our school, she informed me that she was making a decision in November for course selection with the Catholic School Board. They had all the information available to them. They knew what the programming was going to be. The orientation nights were all set up in the fall. And so by then, it was a done deal. By November 30th, she had to make a decision. They signed them up. They put them in the classes. At our school, that information wasn't even available for discussion until the end of January. So that's an example of just like a simple process that impacts parental decisions in terms of the schools they're choosing, and that is an example of an easy fix, but that's a fix that we just have to identify. The other policy issue that did come up this week, talking to a parent, so we do have students that share classes with other schools. So because we are a small school, we are currently under enrollment. So we'll have a child, for example, who might do, in grade 12, maybe doing half their day at Aldershot and half their day at Nelson. And what happens is they are not allowed to participate in extracurricular activities at Nelson if they're splitting their courses. And so if they're in grade 12 and they're trying to utilize their grade 12 year to get their university application ready, and they need those extracurriculars, it's part of their building their resume, unless they can get from Nelson back across town to Aldershot at the end of the day by, you know, 20 minutes after school ends, they're out of the extracurriculars, because that's when they're happening. So that, to me, again, there might be a really good reason why that's in place, that you can't do extracurriculars at two schools, but it's also a policy that's shrinking our enrollment, so maybe we should be reviewing it. And so those are some examples of what I meant.
Trustee Reynolds, the Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. That was actually my question. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Trustee Pappen.
Thank you. This is more of a comment than a question. I realize that a lot of time has gone into this PAR process, and for a lot of people around the table, staff and trustees, it's consumed over 80% of our lives.
Yes.
For the PAR committee, I know one PAR member in my neighborhood told me she felt like she was married to the PAR. So the idea of waiting and looking for more solutions is not really going to solve the problem, because we don't know that if we wait, it's going to get better. And we have heard that this should have been done five years ago. So to say, "Let's wait a little longer," is not really going to answer the question I'm asking.
Okay. And I appreciate that position, but also then, what has this process really been for in the last, of the public consultation? And I would argue that, you know, we're hearing some pretty interesting ideas out of Bateman on suggestions on how to do things new. We're now going and running with concepts of developing environmental studies programs at Aldershot that'll expand our Eco Studies program to something that's just really exceptional across the country. So these are ideas, and they're on the table now. And if you shut down the process without allowing those ideas to be developed, then what happens is the community becomes apathetic and they become cynical, and you lose the engagement. And right now, we have it. We have energy. We have people who are really, really engaged. And I, you know, I don't know what that timeline is. I don't think shutting things down for five years is realistic either. But I do think that what's happened right now has allowed opportunity to come out, and it would be a shame if the opportunity was shut down.
Thank you, Heather. Or, sorry, Kathy. I really appreciate your coming out tonight, your delegation and your perspective. I'd like to invite Heather McElroy up for Aldershot High School. Welcome. When you're ready, Heather.
Okay. Thank you. My name's Heather McElroy, and I am a resident of Aldershot. I actually grew up in Aldershot as well, so I attended Glenview Public School, Maplehurst Middle School, and Aldershot High School. So I've got a pretty good scope on the schools in Aldershot. I returned to Aldershot after starting my family for a number of different reasons, but what I found was it was a decision that was shared with many of my high school peers as a lot of them also returned to that area. It's a special community. It has, obviously, a strong sense of community. It's got convenience to lots of different amenities, schools, abundant green space, parks, pools, dynamic neighborhoods. It's got the gateway access to Hamilton. It's got the RBG. Obviously, everything's very localized in the far west end, and, as was attested to earlier, is a bit of a distance from some of the other amenities that Burlington has to offer. But it also might explain why there's such significant growth in Aldershot these days. Apparently, it's the only zone south of Dundas slated for growth with up to 3,000 new residential units, and that is significant. So it's not only the new home developments that you can see this growth in, it's also the neighborhood churn that's taking a witness, bearing witness to the growth. And it's also the identification of Aldershot as a mobility hub with its close proximity to the Aldershot Go Station. So the significant growth demands services to support the community, and a significant part of those community services revolve around children and learning opportunities for children. With the closure of Fairfield Public School in 2002, Maplehurst, Glenview, and King Road Schools were all redefined, and the elementary cohort was then redirected to Aldershot School. Initially, my understanding is that parents were quite concerned about how the grade sevens and eights would integrate into a high school environment. But what has in fact happened is that integration has promoted increased independence, huge responsibility in the students, and a stronger sense of community on top of greater instructional opportunities to both the tween and early teen communities. And thanks to the care and support of the Aldershot staff and And thanks to the care and support of the Aldershot staff and administrators, that transition has evolved into a well-planned, seamless integration. Students from Maplehurst, Glenview, and Kings Road converge into a high school environment at an earlier age, which allows the transition to take place during a time that's less strife with hormones, possibly less anxious, and also during a time when social circles can integrate more readily. Moving into an elementary, moving an elementary program into a high school has proved to be advantageous to the growth, development, and engagement of grade seven and eight students, and is a unique opportunity for only two schools in Burlington, Central and Aldershot. The benefits of having both the French immersion stream and the English stream at Aldershot are significant and many. They have better access to quality facilities and staff to support learning-enriched opportunities both in and out of the classroom. Plus, there are many extracurricular opportunities for children of all athletic, intellectual, and physical capabilities. Things like more gyms, a proper track, a football field, a cafeteria, an auditorium, a community pool, dedicated art, science, music, and technology rooms, innovative programming, a robotics program, and these are all for grade seven and eights. We're not talking high school students right now. We're talking grade sevens and eights. Leadership programs, school council, a junior band featuring both brass and woodwinds, a daily breakfast club, community activism, it's all there. And all of these opportunities would not exist if they had to continue to go to their smaller K-6 schools that they came from. That's because they're small. There are opportunities that are afforded to our children, not only through being at a high school environment, but also because they have the opportunity to walk to and from school and take responsibility for being involved and engaged. So with a child in grade seven at Aldershot and a child in grade five at Maplehurst, I have experienced firsthand the benefits of integrating some elementary students into a high school environment. He is more independent. He has a very strong sense of responsibility. His self-confidence is very high, and he's got a variety of physical, social, and educational opportunities that have been afforded to him by having grade sevens and eights at Aldershot. Aldershot's a unique and special community, and Aldershot School offers opportunities that inspire growth, involvement, development, and engagement both in and out of the classroom. Integrating grade sevens and eights into high school is a model that is working beyond expectation and a model that perhaps more high schools should actually look at. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Heather. Are there any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight and your perspective and the delegation. I would like to call Ron Rajreddy up to speak about the International Bachelorate. Welcome, Ron.
Thank you.
When you're ready.
Thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. And last but not least, and I'll be short and sweet, I hope. I'd like to start out by asking you to hold on to these three thoughts: 9.4%, 5.2%, and why. As you've already mentioned, my name's Ron Rajreddy. I'm here to speak about parental choice as well, including optional attendance, as well as the International Bachelorate Program, which is a regional program. When we talk about regional programs, I think one of the important things, and I'm not as eloquent as Ms. Serbou, and I promise I'll be easier on you, Mr. Miller, they don't subscribe themselves to these nice circles and geographical walking areas and all these wonderful things that have been pointed out. These are regional programs. That means if you're in the northeast, or you're in the northwest, or you're in Aldershot, or like me, in Tandaga, you're going to drive your kids to that school, or you're going to find a bus to get them there? So, you know, those considerations are meaningless when you're talking about these kind of programs. You have to consider what is happening with these programs, and I'm not going to go over all the points that Ms. Serbou made about the IB program because she made them much better than I could. But what I would point out is our IB program in Burlington is exceptional. I mean, we have produced, you know, two out of, or three, two out of, two students who are the top in the Halton region. So why would we close down a program like that? One of the issues I think that we've sort of addressed here and is at the core of the PAR process is that we're talking about an under-enrollment program or a declining population of students. We have 171 students in the IB program here at Bateman, which is an excellent program. If you look at White Oaks, they have 500 students. So why don't we take some of that $12 million that you're proposing to save or spend and maybe spend $10,000 or $50,000 on marketing? Make people more aware. Why don't we have 500 students at Bateman? Maybe that's a consideration as well to look at the immediate enrollment issue. We don't have to spend money on disrupting the educational ecosystem or pitting north against south and sort of having the American Civil War in Burlington, but we can just look at very simple solutions immediately to increase that enrollment of 100 or 200 students. When I talk to parents in the area, a lot of them aren't even aware that there's a program like that. They find out through, you know, other parents or, you know, through some sort of other means. In fact, I had to dig around to find out about the program myself. Maybe a dedicated website, you know, some social media. You're talking about a few hundred bucks, you know, to increase your student enrollment by 100 or 200 students per year. What is the payback on that for the board? And you're talking about trying to uproot an entrenched program that's a specialty regional program. Ms. Serbou put it very eloquently, I think, and, you know, as a business person or even if you're in healthcare, change management's a very important factor. You cannot, no matter what your intentions are and how good your team is, move a program like this that's a specialty program that has entrenched students, that have a network, and simply just uproot them and move them to Central and hope that that cohort is going to transition nicely. You're talking about two to three years if you get certified, even if everything's beautiful and you get certified. You're talking about a few years before that program's stabilized, which will impact those particular students and parents for two to three years until the program's stabilized, maybe impact their enrollment into university, when really that doesn't need to be done. You know, the, closing Bateman, I think, is about the worst of all options. Increasing enrollment at Bateman through increasing, you know, maybe awareness of the IB program is certainly a better option, I think. So my original numbers were actually stats about the independent school program. The independent school program grew by 9.4%. The public school program decreased by 5.2%. That's a 15-point percent gap. So why is that? Maybe parents need more choice. Maybe parents need more involvement in the school system. Maybe we need less of a top-down approach. Maybe we need to listen to some of these innovative ideas that have come up rather than just have sort of a lawnmower approach saying, "We're going this way." It's not a matter of delaying the issue. It's a matter of looking at a better solution. And that's my presentation.
Thank you. Trustee, questions or comments for our delegate? Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. A comment and then a question. Thank you for the ideas on marketing and that. I'm sure that that's something that we will definitely take to heart. I just point a clarification. There are 500 students in the White Oaks program because Milton doesn't have an IB program. Milton's students are bused down to Oakville for that, so that's why those are high numbers. But I wanted to get back to your 9.4% and 5.2%. I just want to make sure that I understood what you were saying. The 9.4% is the increase in the IB population in Burlington?
No. So I was just pointing out, just as a general statement, you know, we're talking about declining enrollment. Well, maybe what we're really talking about is lack of faith in the public system because the independent school system grew by 9.4% while the public school system decreased by 5.4%.
Do you mean private schools? Is that what you mean?
Yeah. Private schools, independent programs, which is the gap that the IB program bridges. So that's the last thing you want to touch within a system that's already suffering from a lack of faith.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
And just as a matter of fact, for White Oaks, even if you took out, you know, if you added the Milton cohort that you're talking about in there, it would decrease it by maybe 15% that number. If you took that sort of aspect out and balanced the population, you would still have a significantly higher enrollment relative to Bateman with White Oaks. So we could do a lot more with awareness. We could probably increase that cohort by much more, and certainly they have the capacity to do that.
I think we may need to respectfully disagree on the number of Milton students being bused down to Oakville. Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Collins.
Thank you. I agree with your comments regarding marketing. I also am very much aware that Bateman only has half of a feeder school for its English program, and I think that is an even bigger source of the issue with the low enrollment. And I would love to see us market and brand our schools and maybe dispense with some of the old reputations that are no longer valid and really promote our schools for the value that they bring. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just to add to that, again, the core purpose of the PAR is to address overpopulation at Hayden and under enrollment at other schools. Certainly, changing boundaries or looking at redistribution is certainly a better option than disrupting the entire educational ecosystem in Burlington.
Trustee Pappin.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned regional programs, and I just wanted to find out what your definition of a regional program is and...
So what I'm saying is regional to Burlington. So in other words, we have a unique program in the IB program that's only offered at Bateman in the entire Burlington area. So when you're talking about a program like that, you can't talk about walking distances. You can't talk about geography. You have to really look at the program itself. You know, the program itself is what's the issue.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I'd like to thank you very much, Ron, for coming out tonight and delegating and bringing us your perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
So I'd like to thank everyone who has come out tonight to bring their information, their delegation, their perspective to us and to reassure you that we have heard you, that we are reading every single email that we have received, we're getting many phone calls, we are getting letters, we are reading them all, and that will all play into our decision when we debate this at the board table. And you've all brought up things I know that you will hear being questioned at the board table in the next two meetings that we are going to be having as we seek maybe more clarification or information on those items. So thank you very much for everyone for coming out tonight. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Gervent seconded by Trustee Pappin. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, and good night.